Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to get going on our meeting tonight. This is the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for December 3rd, 2018. Thank you all for being here. We will, we want to see if we have the comment, citizen comment. Bud Stark. Ray, have a seat. Thank you. As we do with most of our meetings, we will start tonight with public comment on any item on the agenda, and if you would come to the microphone and adjust it, give us your name and address, please spell your last name. We will go from there, and you have three minutes. So, our first speaker is Rachel Hultin, and Connie Burge on deck.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Hultin, H-U-L-T-I-N, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And apparently, I'm supposed to give a presentation here? So, I was sure I would be one of like 100 people tonight talking, so I'm delighted. I'll get out of here fast enough to go do some other things. Uh, yeah. No, I've got to go to an NRS meeting at 7:30. So, I'm here tonight to talk about two different agenda items, but to me, they seem very related. Two of the items tonight, one is relating to the recent emergency ordinance on the Bel Air neighborhood, and the other is regarding the appointment of the soon-to-be vacated treasurer's position. And it seemed to me, both are really daylighting change management in our community. And the treasurer position, I wish I could stay for the discussion because, to me, it is, it reminded me, and I think it reminded a lot of other people in our community, that we have a charter that asks one thing of our city, and maybe it's time to revisit what that charter asks of us. But my reading of the charter is that we have an elected position that is being vacated for almost a year, and I do hope that council will appoint that position for the remainder of the term. But I also hope that we all see that as an invitation for us to reconsider some of the things that are in our charter. I know we're one of the only, I think the only, community in Jefferson County that has an elected treasurer. So, these are things for us to look at, and I hope council does a thorough and thoughtful job of evaluating that question. But now is, to me, not the time to ask that question when we have that vacancy, but rather, is that a question we need to ask ourselves moving forward? And then, with the Bel Air neighborhood, I think, you know, we've seen in this that our community has neighborhoods that are very dear and beloved to them, and they want to make sure that they're retaining that character and that quality. And so, when we talk about change in our community, we need to be clear about things like preserving our very intact historic neighborhoods like Bel Air, and I live in Hillcrest Heights, I think it's lovely. And I think that that, I hope, is an outcome of the NRS, is the ability for the city and the citizens to, you know, recognize what do we really need to preserve? And then, what are some areas that we can be more open to change? And to that end, I'm looking forward to seeing what alternatives the council discusses tonight. I think the outcome of last week's epic meeting was a best-case scenario for that meeting. And it's just a reminder to me that we don't get to decide if we change. Change happens to our community, and to us, it's a decision, are we going to let change happen to us, or are we going to guide change so that we make sure the things we care the most about are preserved, and that we are moving forward inviting the changes we want? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connie Burge.
Hi, I'm Connie Burge, spelling of the last name is B-U-R-G. I live at 5195 Swadley Street in Wheat Ridge. And I just wanted to chat just briefly on a little bit of this Bel Air neighborhood thing. I have people who, I know people who live there, and it is, it's a delightful place. And we should be preserving that, and any time a change comes up to modify that, it should, it should, the neighbors should have some say in that. So, there should be a way to notify the neighbors, and maybe that should be a variance instead of just some administrative approval. I think that they should modify whatever this administrative approval is. Things should have to go to council for approval for subdivisions. And then, one of the proposals was possibly creating special overlay areas, like we could call the Bel Air neighborhood an overlay area, and it could be exempt from some of these things. And I'm opposed to that as well. I don't think we need to start making all these little special areas in the city. I think whatever limitations we put on this should be citywide. And maybe there should be exemptions, small little pockets of exemptions if people decide that that's what there should be, but let's not have little pockets where we, like these flag neighborhoods, let's have it be citywide, and not just little tiny pockets where we worry about the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I have listed, signed up to speak. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak who's not signed up? And you're free to do that at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment and go to our first agenda item, which is a, an update on the Family Justice Center. Mr. Goff, would you like to introduce this?
I will, briefly. I'll just turn it over to Mr. Pickett to introduce our guest.
This is Deputy-
Use your mic.
On my left is Deputy District Attorney, excuse me, Candace Coolidge, and on my right is a former undersheriff, Ray Fleer. They've been doing a lot of work on the Family Justice Center. I think it was last, late last year that you heard the first presentation regarding that. We've got some important updates, and I'd like to turn it over to them now.
Thank you. So, as you can see on the screen, we've kind of come a long way in a year, and I'm really excited to update you on the progress that we've made. As you can see on the screen, we have a name and a logo. So, the name of the Family Justice Center will be Porchlight, a Family Justice Center. And our tagline there is "You're Not Alone." And we got that because, in talking to survivors of violence, most of them that you talked to say, "I felt like I was alone, there was nobody to help me. I felt like there was nowhere to turn, or I didn't even know where to turn, so I did it myself." You hear that time and time again, "I did it myself, I went through it myself." And so, we want victims and survivors to know that you're not alone. And so, we've selected, that is our tagline. So, we will be Porchlight, a Family Justice Center. I remember last time we were here, one of you had the question, "Well, there's no business plan, this is a concept." And I'm happy to say, we have a business plan. Thankful to, the Jefferson County Business Resource Center helped us with our business plan. They're a wonderful nonprofit in Jefferson County that helps businesses, small businesses, get started. So, I do have copies of the business plan for anybody who's interested. So, we have put that together. We do have, our mission is to bring together essential services for victims, survivors, and their children, to create a positive pathway forward and to foster public safety. We have set forth our vision and values, and this is all in our business plan as well. Our values are hope, respect, community, empowerment, and freedom. And our vision is that Porchlight is a beacon of light no matter the darkness. We inspire hope and offer a place for healing, creating a community free from violence, abuse, and exploitation. And so, where are we now? Like I said, we have come a long way. We have multiple different working groups of, made up of folks from our over 70 partners. We have over 70 community partners, which is just fantastic, the community support that we've received for Porchlight. And these are businesses, nonprofits, governmental, non-governmental entities that heard about Porchlight and want to be involved. They want to provide services at the center and want to help us in any way that they can. And so, members from all of these 70 different organizations have been participating in our different working groups to help us to create the center. We have a project board, which is comprised of a lot of the stakeholders, executive directors, and elected officials for the project, and they meet on a monthly basis to make the kind of overarching policy decisions for Porchlight. We're currently operating under the District Attorney's 501(c)(3), so we are a nonprofit, we're an arm of that 501. However, we are working with a pro bono lawyer who is helping us to create our own standalone 501(c)(3). So, that is in progress. We should see some movement on that in the next month or so. We have had some donations of furniture, and you'll hear, the big exciting news is the location. We have selected a location for Porchlight. We're working with a local owner. The location is in Lakewood, and it is at 8th and Quail. We're looking at leasing a property. We're in communication with a local owner who has been just fantastic to work with, and so, we're really excited about the prospect of that location. And for that location, we've gotten some donations of furniture from Lutheran Medical Center, actually donated an exam table because we do, we will have forensic medical exams at the center. We've gotten some donations, some cubicle donations from a couple of other, from Kellin Company, is a company that was moving out of state, and they didn't want to bring their furniture with them, and they heard about us, and so, they donated their furniture to us. And the sheriff's office has been wonderful to have their inmate workers move that furniture and store it under the jail. And so, we have had donations of furniture from both of those entities. Going to pass over the rest to Ray?
Well, first, I think the first thing I'd like to do is, of course, thank the law enforcement community. We've had wonderful support from law enforcement agencies, Chief Dan Brennan, of course, the command staff here, also the Victim Outreach, VOI, victim service providers have been working diligently on this problem, on this process, and helping us to get it where it is today. So, we're very appreciative for that kind of support and help. One of the things that we've been really fortunate about, too, is receiving some donations and some help along the way. We've listed some of the donors here, Golden, City of Golden, Chief Kilpatrick. They were gracious enough early on to get us some seed money to get us kind of moving down the pathway here. You'll see a video a little bit later on, and it says "Funded by the City of Golden," and Golden graciously donated about $10,000 early on in this project. So, I think that goes to show the belief they have and the need for this project. So, we're very appreciative of them. The District Attorney Pete Weir also has helped us along the way, naturally. Sheriff Jeff Schrader, Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, we've got some in-kind help, as Candace said. Great moving and storage company over there underneath the jail, inmate workers helping move furniture in and out of Kellin Company and Lutheran Hospital. So, they've been great support to us as well. First Bank also donated some funds to help us along the way, so we've had some great support along the way. We also have received one grant at this point in time. It's an OVW grant, and it will be funding two pieces of the puzzle for us, one of which is a position called a navigator with the Family Justice Center, someone who meets and greets people who come through the door looking for services and helps connect them to services. So, the OVW grant will be funding the navigator, one of the navigator positions for a couple of years for us. And we also received through that grant $60,000 to help contract for childcare in the Family Justice Center. That's another piece of the puzzle that we'll have at the Family Justice Center. People who come in, often come in with children, no place to, no place to put them for the time being, so we'll have a drop-in daycare facility at the Family Justice Center, and that was funded through the OVW grant. We also have kept our eyes open, and there are a couple of more grants this year that became available, and we're going to be applying for those, to assist in the funding process as well. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed, but we think we stand a good chance based on, based on the support, the overwhelming support we have in the Jefferson County community. One thing we learned through all the, through all the time and contacting and talking to other people where Family Justice Centers came to be, it's not always an easy process because in a lot of communities across the country, there's not the kind of support that we share here. We are, quite honestly, kind of a unique community in that regard. The way that law enforcement, district attorney's offices, sheriff's offices, nonprofit providers, all work together in this community really is a testament to the kind of people that we have here. So, that honestly is going to be quite a selling point, we think, when it comes to obtaining additional grant funds for this project. When you have and can list over 70 providers that have been involved in the process, I think that speaks volumes. And the services we provide will be provided across the board to all of those, all of those folks. So, we're anxious to get that underway. As of this time, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and Lakewood Police Department have created family crimes units in support of this process. We will have space at the Family Justice Center for law enforcement. We think law enforcement presence at the Family Justice Center is an integral part of the success of a Family Justice Center. So, obviously, we will have space for whoever would like to come aboard. Okay? I'm sorry. I was kind of speaking to Dave here. One of the things that also we recognized early on was important was a high-risk assessment team, and a high-risk assessment team, that team is a, made up of multi-functions. We have people from, I'm going to probably miss a few, but law enforcement, the prosecution, probation. We have people from human services, we have some of our service providers. Who all am I?
Family Tree.
Family Tree.
VOI.
Yeah. Who are present, and every week, this high-risk assessment team meets with the sole purpose of reviewing high-risk domestic violence cases. Those cases where we think there's a high risk of lethality associated with those cases, and you would probably unfortunately be surprised at the number of those cases that come across the district attorney's office in a week's time. So, this group gets together, they review those cases with the sole purpose not of criticizing or critiquing law enforcement response, or critiquing the prosecution in the case, but their sole purpose is to make sure that on the backside, the victim in those cases received the necessary services so that they stay engaged in the prosecution of the case. We know, and I'm sure you've heard this so many times, that when victims fall out of the system, when they don't stay engaged in the process, when they don't follow through in prosecution, oftentimes, they go back to the abuser and the cycle repeats itself. And what we find many, many times in these cases, that there are young children involved, they're in the home. We read it often in the reports that the child was asleep, but you bet they hear what's going on in that house. So, we want to make sure that people on the back end of those cases are getting the necessary services that they need so that they can make the change in their life that they, that helps them get them out of that abusive situation. So, we think the high-risk assessment team, we've been going now for about seven or eight weeks, and so far, it's paid substantial dividends. A lot of good follow-up on these cases, just getting people to the table together to talk, to connect, to be able to reach out face-to-face and say, "What have you done? Do you have a good phone number? What can we do? How can we provide services to those people?" So, that's really paid dividends, and I think Candace said this early on. We looked at the high-risk assessment team as sort of a mini Family Justice Center. So, the whole purpose is really to make sure that we aren't losing people out of the system. So, that's been one of the really good things. We've also had some help with some marketing material, thanks to a company called Genuine and Blue that you might be familiar with, they're a Wheat Ridge business. Genuine and Blue stepped up to the table. We got connected to them through a, through a class that one of the, one of the folks, Blue Heart Cop was providing on video and the importance of video and marketing. We went to the session, and we connected with them. Couple of great people there. They both said that they have experienced or had experiences of domestic violence and other things in their lives. They were very willing to jump on board, and they have been providing us some of our marketing material. We'll show you a video here in a minute that they did to help us down the path to gain donors for the project. But they haven't quite done it free of cost, but for the work that they do, we aren't paying them much. So, they've been real assets to us, so we appreciate them. You can see the website up there, porchlightfjc.org. So, if you have a minute sometime, if you'd like to kind of follow along with us, we're fortunate now that we have a website up and running, and you can take a look at that website, you can follow along and see the changes. As we say in the website, we're here trying to build some momentum for the project, obviously letting people know where we stand with the project, and the ultimate goal is to turn the porch light on, to turn the lights on at the Family Justice Center. So, please, if you get a chance, follow along with us on our journey here through that website. We have some help putting that together, and we'll keep that updated as frequently as we can, so. You want to try the video?
Oh, I was going to talk about our-
Got a little bit? Oh, okay. This is our, this is our location at 8th and Quail. You can take a look, it's about 16,000 square feet. We went through a process with all of our partners, and we identified the core services that we, that we would think are needed to make up the Family Justice Center when it opens its doors. So, through that process, we did some space planning, and we identified, based on the needs and the services that we are going to provide, that we needed about 14,500 square feet. We obtained a realtor from Sperry Real Estate, Cheryl Powell. Cheryl's donating her time to the project as well. We met with her, and she loved the idea of the project, saw the need for it, and she said she wanted to be a part of it. She's been a tremendous asset. Early on, Cheryl set about the task of finding us a location and came across this property. She had a number of criteria, and one of which was it should be a locally-owned property. So, we met with Craig, who's the owner of this property, he's a local owner, and he's helped us immensely. He has about 16,000 square feet here for lease. So, we've been working with him on a lease now. We have signed a letter of intent to go through the negotiation process with him. It so far hasn't been much of a negotiation because he has been so willing to help us out at every turn. One of the things that he offered early on was a very reduced rate for the first year and second year of our lease to help get us in there. And even on that reduced rate, he agreed that we would only pay on 10,000 square feet of the space, even though we'll get the full utilization of 16,000 square feet. So, he's been a genuine benefit to this project, to say the least. So, that's our, kind of our location right there. If you get a chance, you can take a look at it. Very nice facility.
We've been meeting with architects for the tenant finish on the building, and we've selected an architect with the owner, and so, in looking at the process, it's looking like we are hoping to be able to open the doors at the end of next year, so, end of 2019. And I'm going to try to get this video right here. Sound? Should I just put the mic?
Without your help, without your help, without your help, I will stay.
I will stay in my abusive relationship.
I will continue being my husband's punching bag.
His prisoner, his slave, his piece of trash.
Without your help, I will continue to be taken advantage of.
My mom's boyfriend will continue to yell and hit, throw things.
And touch me and do things.
Without your help.
Your help.
I will live in fear every minute of every day.
Every day, he's near me, near me.
Without your help.
I might grow up to be abusive, too.
I will run away, live on the streets, learn to trust no one.
I will always be angry.
And think about suicide.
My cries for help will never be heard.
Without your help.
I will see things and hear things.
And have my childhood stolen from me.
I will never have the courage.
The courage.
The courage to get the help I need.
To get out of my living hell.
My living hell.
Without your help.
The services.
The support.
The protection me and my kids need.
Will remain just beyond my reach.
Will be too far to get to on my own.
So, please, please help.
Because nothing will change.
Nothing.
Without your help.
That's our update. Any questions for us?
Questions from council, thank you very much. That's, you've made great, great progress in a year. You were here about a year ago and had a vision, and now, it's really coming together. So, I'm really thrilled. That's really great. Any other comments from council? George?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the thanks, and actually, I would love one of the business copies.
If you'd just pass those around, we might all want to have a look for some good reading. So, thank you very much. I hope you'll stay engaged with us as the project moves forward. We'd love to have your plans and see how we can participate, so.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, are you going to be coming to us for some funding requests in the future? I know, I kind of think that's why you're here, really, but specific funding-
You know, we're talking, we're talking to everybody. Obviously, funding's a need, and I'm not, you know, that's, there's no question about that. We have not formalized, and nor do I want to get ahead of District Attorney Pete Weir in that regard. There's a likelihood that, yes, there may be a small ask coming in the future.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to intimate that I'm against giving you some funding. It saddens me that there's so, there's so much need out there. I mean, I'll bet you, if I look at my own church body, there's probably 100 different places I could write a check, and I have to make decisions there. So, as a city, we're stuck. But this does affect us all greatly, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
And I'm just trying, I'm just thinking-
We're just asking, every time we do this presentation, we ask people, you know, if you can, spread the word. We're also looking for volunteers. One of the pieces we have in place, we're trying to put together a core of volunteers to work at the Family Justice Center. We've had a great response, so our kind of standard pitch is either spread the word, volunteer, donate, so.
I would, I would remind you, too, that we have a, oh crap, what do we call them? Outside agency. Outside agency board that people go to and to get into our funding list, too, and I would encourage you to talk to Patrick about getting in touch with those folks and getting on the 2019 agenda.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is an update. Okay, our next item is an update. On the Colorado Electronic Crimes Task Force.
Mr. Pickett, are you going to start off or we have maybe introduce? I don't know if counsel had a chance to meet Daryl, so.
So I would like to take that opportunity now. And this is Commander Daryl Guanola. He's a new addition to our department. He is in command of the Investigations Bureau. He comes to us from Greenwood Village with a large amount of experience and one of those, one of the reasons that he was chosen was his ability to innovate. And he's only been with us a few months. This is certainly his brainchild and an opportunity for the Wheat Ridge Police Department to move forward into an area where we are currently lacking. So at that, I will turn it over to him.
Well, thank you. It's great to be here. And I won't say necessarily this is my brainchild so much as it is kind of a recycled brainchild and something that I have a little bit of experience in from my time in Greenwood Village. But one of the things that I noticed when I came on board here, apart from having an Investigations Bureau that is adept in virtually every way, that just does great work and voluminous amounts of it on a day-to-day basis, was that as a police department, we are very much behind the curve in our ability to look into computer forensics and any type of criminal activity that has to do with needing any imaging or evidence that you would find through a forensic analysis. This is a position that I was in when I was supervising the Investigations Division at Greenwood Village as well. And one of the, well, there's basically two avenues that we have here in Wheat Ridge when we need to examine a computer forensically at this point for any evidence. One is to take a portion of our budget. We do have some money budgeted to hire a private third-party computer forensic specialist. This poses a couple of problems, one of which is the timeframe it takes. When you obtain a warrant to forensically examine a computer or image it, there are some timeframes involved when that needs to get done. And when we have to contract with a third party, oftentimes we're outside the scope of those timeframes and it becomes a very big nightmare trying to keep that work within the scope of the warrant. The other issue that comes up there is sometimes those images are law enforcement sensitive. They're images of child pornography. They're images that we don't want other people to see and that we really want to limit exposure to. So that's another problem when we ask a third party to image computers for us. Now, there is the Rocky Mountain Computer Forensics Lab, which is a joint multi-jurisdictional lab that when it started, all the agencies in the region had great access to and it was relatively easy to get your computers processed and imaged through that lab. With the proliferation of computer crime, they've pretty much turned to the point where if you don't have a full-time devoted examiner at the Rocky Mountain Lab, they will likely not take your case. And if they do take it, your wait times are oftentimes in excess of 180 days to a year. The Secret Service has a number of electronic crime task forces throughout the country. The one in Colorado is headquartered at their headquarters in Greenwood Village. And essentially what this group does is gets training through the Secret Service at their National Computer Forensic Institute in Hoover, Alabama. They select employees from throughout the country to receive this training, all members of this task force. They pay for the training, they pay for equipment, they pay for everything related to the program. I had an examiner in Greenwood Village who was selected for this once we joined this task force, went to a one-month school in Hoover, Alabama and came back with about $50,000 worth of computer forensic imaging tools. And we were able to get a lab up and running in Greenwood Village. And the program has grown exponentially over the time since its inception. And I won't drone on with a great deal of details, but I will tell you that the program is entirely free from the Secret Service. Everything is funded, travel's funded, hotel lodging, equipment, everything is funded if you get selected. Now, it is a very competitive program. They have two or three classes a year with 30 spots per class and they do a number of different disciplines as well. But there are really not a lot of resources, even in Jefferson County in this regard. And since I've been here, the handful of times we've needed some computer imaging done, I've actually gone back to Greenwood Village to ask my examiner there to go ahead and help us out, which he's graciously agreed to do. Which leads me to the commitments. Once we get through this program, should we get into this program, is we do have an obligation then to help out some surrounding jurisdictions as well as the Secret Service with any needs that they might have. But it is nothing out of pocket to the city. And the MOU that you're presented with really is just one that will allow and allow the Secret Service to pay overtime, to reimburse the city for any overtime that might be authorized through them or this program to help out the Secret Service. They are backlogged with computers and organizations throughout the state needing these images done. And so from time to time, their supervisory special agent will call on task force members and say, "We have this backlog of computers. If you can take them to your lab and process them, we'll happily pay you." So the MOU primarily addresses their ability to reimburse us for those overtime costs. And with that, I really don't have a whole lot more about this program, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions from counsel? Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Just in trying to think about the past experience and what the city has gone through relative to cases like this, have we seen any cases where we weren't able to move the case forward because of the timelines? Or is there, have we not faced that type of case yet? Or what's the turnaround time at the present time?
Well, I did look at historical data as a backdrop to how this program would be used here. And I did find several cases where there were instances where we were outside the scope of the timeframes on our warrants. And it really boils down to a couple of different issues. One is a service delivery to the victims of crime. One is compliance with court orders. And one is just the ability to get the data. I found that the detectives that we have here are amazingly adept at getting a lot of the information that they might otherwise be able to get on some of these portable storage devices or computers or whatever the case might be. But they have to go the long route, for lack of a better word. So a lot of efficiencies are missed in the lack of having a program of this nature as well. So we have encountered some of those. We do have referrals, two referrals from the National Center for Missing Exploited Children as we speak right now that are both have child pornography components to them that as we get further into that, we'll have to address the need to get those processed as well.
There's one other question I had. I guess as it relates to education and awareness around economic or electronic crimes and the like, it seems like some people may not even be aware that they're the victim of a crime for a significant period afterwards or not even realize it altogether. So what could be done to educate or raise awareness around these types of crimes?
Well, I think when we talk about electronic crime, that is such a broad and vast array, everything from, you know, child pornography to identity theft. And so the traditional components of awareness would include, you know, monitoring your credit bureaus and some of the things that people look for with phishing emails and just being attentive to those sorts of things. So community from an education standpoint, we could certainly, you know, share that information on a regular basis with our citizens and some of those tips and things to be on the lookout for as far as solicitation goes now. As far as some of the more sinister electronic crime, the dealing in child pornography and other things, that gets into a much sort of deeper issue. I will tell you, there's a number of different databases out there. NCMC, National Center for Missing Exploited Children maintains a database of known child pornographic images and all the major search engines have. And it's not the images themselves, it's the hash value that's associated with the images. And so as these images are uploaded onto the internet, if they're known, then they're matched against this database, all the images are. And that's what gets them flagged and sent to law enforcement in their respective areas. And that's in fact how the two cases that we have before us right now came to us is through those known child pornography pictures and through those databases.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. One of the things that seems to be difficult about, you know, computer crime is that so much of it takes place out of state, if you will. The home base, if you will, is out of state. How do we address this issue and when do things turn into federal cases versus local versus state? And does this help us coordinate those issues a little bit better?
I'm sure. I think the easiest way I can think of to explain when something goes federal versus when we keep it is when the federal agency wants to take it. They will tell you they have threshold for dollars amounts and other criteria that they look at. But at the end of the day, if the fruit is low-hanging enough and it's a good enough case, then our federal partners will be happy to run with it. With regard to some of the other jurisdictional boundaries and issues that come up in computer crime, that's always a challenge. What we try to do is investigate and resolve cases to the furthest extent we can. And if we are able to show that this computer crime is originating in some small city in New York, we obviously don't have the resources to send somebody to New York, but we will prepare that case. We will forward it on to that sheriff's department or that police department and say, "This is everything that we have. We sure would love it if you could pick up the ball and run with this."
Additional comments, questions? Ms. Dozeman.
What is the process for applying for this program? And is there a certain criteria that is attractive?
Applying for...
The...
For our membership there?
For the membership, and yeah.
No, once we're a member agency, the Secret Service provides quarterly training to all member agencies. The way this would roll out here would be we would identify a primary member of our department to be the liaison to this and to get them into, they say it's a lottery. I would call it more of a hybrid lottery slash, maybe how will you know the folks down there? Because while there is a lottery process for selection into these positions, oftentimes people are on the lottery, but they will change organizations, they will, for whatever reason, not be able to go to the classes that's up and coming. So as those vacancies come up, the special agents in charge of the different regions will go ahead and fill those positions. So for us, it is as simple as joining this task force, identifying a person and then trying to get them into that lottery pool. And that's something that I do have experience with and some success with from my prior employer and I hope to carry that relationship forward here in Wheat Ridge as well.
Good. Any additional comments? Mr. Urban.
Do we need a consensus?
This is a memorandum of understanding that is ready to go. It does not need to come to a formal vote of the council. They are asking for us to have a consensus to move forward. It's set up to be signed by Chief Brennan.
I move to support and encourage this membership and hope all the best.
Is there consensus on the council? We have unanimous consensus, so please move forward with executing memorandum of understanding, the MOU, much better said. And we appreciate you bringing this forward. And I think this will be a really positive program for our community.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is item number three, which is revision to the West Metro Drug Task Force IGA. And Mr. Pickett, are you on the deck for this one also?
I believe I will do that one.
All right. Please continue.
So in 1995, Wheat Ridge joined forces with other members of the Jefferson County law enforcement community to put together a drug enforcement task force. And that task force has been in operation continually since that time. I was fortunate enough to spend eight years there and it is a real benefit to each community because these investigations are such that one community's designated personnel are really inadequate to handle these investigations. At the time the Drug Task Force was put into effect, the federal government allowed certain multi-jurisdictional task force to apply for what is called asset forfeiture. So the seizure of assets from arrestees and convicted individuals, felons in this case. And those assets had to be determined to be either ill-gotten gains or those used for the facilitation of criminal enterprise. The West Metro Drug Task Force handled all of that, the application and receipt of those funds. And it was those funds that were used to really fund the operation of the Drug Task Force. Although individual agencies paid for the salary and benefits of those assigned personnel, things like rent, equipment, training, all of that were handled through asset forfeiture. There have been changes in how the federal government handles asset forfeiture application. And what has occurred is that multi-jurisdictional task force, if they are not separate legal entities, cannot apply for nor distribute assets gained through that process. Consequently, we're going to have to change the funding model for the Drug Task Force. Still, the plan is to have asset forfeiture handle the operational needs of the task force and for individual agencies to handle the salary and benefits of assigned personnel. But a fiscal agent has to be determined that is a law enforcement agency. For the purposes of this IGA, that is the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. So they will handle all of the requests through federal and state asset forfeiture for the purposes of operational funding for the Drug Task Force. In years past, in the event that assets received through asset forfeiture were greater than those used in the operation of the Drug Task Force, there would be a disbursement. And that meant that those excess funds would go to the individual agencies involved by means of a formula based on participation. That is no longer possible through these rules. So what the process would be is that the Drug Task Force through the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office would apply for asset forfeiture up to the point of 115% of budgeted operational costs received. Once that money has been received by the Drug Task Force, then each individual agency would make application to the federal government or the state for asset forfeiture. That sounds horrifically complicated and I'm not going to tell you that it's not to a degree. It is something that however, that we do know how to do. And we would work with the other agencies to make joint application. And the federal government has agreed to make any award according to the formula in our IGA. Now that should have some questions. So basically what the situation is, is that the Sheriff's Office handles asset forfeiture for the operation of the Drug Task Force up to 115% of operational costs. At that point, then the individual agency... to 115% of operational costs. At that point, then the individual agencies take over.
Okay. Well, that generated a few questions, I'm sure, from council. Who would like to go first? Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you. So in the memo, it says that we currently have two detectives assigned to the task force. And so the Fund 17 gets a 10.5% of their awarded assets. But our percentage is subject to change because in our 2019 budget, we will be hiring another officer who will then take our participation up to three detective credit. So does that mean the 10.5% of what would be awarded will be higher?
Yes, at least for a while. Now, that only works for as long as nobody else adds membership to the Drug Task Force. But that, you know, obviously, we're putting that position in the Drug Task Force, not for the purposes of trying to gain further assets, but because Wheat Ridge needs that participation with that group. And that position is actually supervisor position so that our personnel, as well as our personnel with other task force, are supervised by a sergeant who would report to Commander Guadnola.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as it relates to outside operations and task force operations, how do you delineate which bucket an operation would go into? Because in looking at the IGA, it indicates that non-task force operations would, that those forfeitures would go directly to the city, whereas task force forfeitures go to the task force. So how is that delineated or when is that delineated?
All right. So when we talk about asset forfeiture, it really falls under two groups, which is felony criminal enterprises, which is where drug distribution operations fall, and then prostitution, which is the only misdemeanor that is covered by forfeiture law. So we have operations that, like, to give an example, a few years ago, we took down a mortgage fraud operation. They had assets that we couldn't return to victims. And we applied to the state for asset forfeiture. The Drug Task Force had nothing to do with that. We make our own application. And that's really why, when it's time for Wheat Ridge to make application in drug cases, we're well-equipped to do it.
And follow-up, as it relates to asset forfeiture, what is the trigger or the mechanism to file a request for asset forfeiture? Is it a conviction? Or what is the mechanism that causes us to be able to lay that claim?
So, you know, there is both federal and state law. But in the last few years, the General Assembly has taken steps to make sure that individual law enforcement agencies within the state of Colorado have to abide only by their rules rather than federal rules. So it is conviction in every case that Colorado entities are involved in.
Ms. Davis, please.
So I just have a quick question because it kind of goes back to the staffing of the committee and budget and those types of things. Because you said, okay, if we add one, it would be, we're talking about 10%. Well, it would be more than 10%. And it was kind of the point being as well. And that would depend on if anybody else adds one. I mean, that seems pretty fluid. I mean, so it's like, well, you know, when do they ask everybody to take a poll of what we owe? Or, you know, when do we divvy it out? You know? How would they do that? Because it might just be a good day or a bad day when they take the roll call and people show up with, or we have our amounts of folks. So do they do that on a certain time, you know, like, hey, January 1st? What, you know, how does everybody show up on the committee and their percentage? Or is it throughout the year, the average is 2.7 people? I mean, how does that work? Because it seems pretty fluid.
So it actually happens by a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
So...
I think you might have just, you said that, and I just didn't interpret it very well.
So what happens is, is that once it goes, that 115% threshold is reached, then operation whatever commences. And what contributing agencies have what personnel at the time that operation comes to fruition, comes to arrest. That is how that's handled. And that is, that's determined by the board. And Chief Brennan sits on the...
I think you outlined that. I was just a little slow on the take.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I know we've received some funds for that just recently. I think I signed off on an acquisition for something that came from the asset forfeiture funds. I do have one kind of online, one slightly sideways question here that I've always wondered about. Who provides oversight to make sure that these funds aren't mishandled? Because you got feds, you got state, counties, cities, just to make sure that everything was on the up and up when it comes to the actual forfeiture side of things where they take somebody's property?
Okay. So asset forfeiture is a civil action. So basically, when the city of Wheat Ridge says that this convicted felon has this amount of ill-gotten gains, we basically sue him for it. So we file a case in district court where it is then heard by a judge. So that's who makes that determination about whether or not this was all done appropriately. Now, that said, it is like absolutely every other civil case. We often come to a deal. And in those cases, we, working through the district attorney's office, will come to an agreement with the defendant, working through his attorney, that we are not going to go to court. We are not going to go to hearing. This amount of money will be forfeited and this amount will go back to the defendant.
Okay. And I keep thinking, I can't remember, but what did we just, I know we just acquired like $20,000 or something worth something.
Well, we didn't acquire it. We spent it.
I mean, we acquired something. What did we acquire?
Yeah. We re-bottled the records section to, so that we could bring on personnel that council approved for.
We haven't received any forfeiture funds in quite some time, I believe.
We have not received forfeiture funds in quite some time.
All right. Additional questions from council? This is an IGA that will need to come to council. We have it scheduled, but I would like to see a consensus to bring this to council on the December 10th meeting.
Like to make a motion for consensus?
No, consensus is fine. So we have consensus to bring this to council on December the 10th. And Mr. Fitzgerald.
Before you leave, I'm a little behind on the ball here. And I was looking at the budget for Porchlight. And if you can answer this, fine. If you can't, you don't have to. I see, this is a very detailed budget in a lot of ways. I even see an imputed cost for a storage room. But what I don't see is anything for food or kitchen. So I take it that the battered person will not spend the night there and eat there.
All right. So as long as we all agree that I am not an expert in this, I will tell you what I, how I have been briefed. And that is, there will be no overnight services at Porchlight. Now, let me take half a step back from that. People won't sleep there. Services will be provided through the night, emergency services. But there is no shelter associated with it.
We're not going to send them home to the place where they're battered?
No. There are designated shelters that we use now and will continue to use then.
And I would think that in connection with the childcare facility, there'll be refreshments available, if not a full kitchen. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. All right. That will conclude item number three. We'll move to item number four. This is a memorandum on administrative subdivisions in Bel Air. And Mr. Johnstone is here to walk us through item number four.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council is well aware, the topic of administratively-approved residential subdivisions has been a topic of discussion at several recent council meetings, most recently last Monday and beginning back on October 22nd. Much of that discussion has been centered around a two-lot, or in the context of, I should say, a two-lot administrative subdivision that was recently approved at 4055 Everett Street in the Bel Air subdivision. That subdivision also approved a flag lot, referred to as a flag lot, which has also been part of the community conversation that we've been having over the last month or so. At the October 22nd meeting, city council adopted an emergency ordinance for 90 days that placed a temporary moratorium on the issuance of building permits for single-family homes in administratively-approved subdivisions. At the November 5th meeting, city council did, we had the topic on the agenda again, and city council had discussion to pass a consensus to put a potential reconsideration of that initial moratorium on the agenda for November 26th. And we also had a discussion of some options on November 5th of how you might amend the code, both procedurally or substantively, to address some of the issues that have been raised in the community during the community public comment. Also, at the November 26th meeting, after initially rescinding that first moratorium on the issuance of building permits, you subsequently adopted an emergency ordinance, so again, effective for 90 days on any, on the acceptance and processing of any further administrative subdivision specific to the Bel Air subdivision. So that emergency ordinance is for 90 days by charter. So it's in effect until February 24th, 2019. We did also include in your packet for this evening, a copy of the November 5th study session, council memo from staff. We had provided five potential options in that memo, just kind of off the cuff of ways that we thought you could look at making code amendments if you wanted to be responsive to some of the issues that have been raised during these various public comment periods. So we thought that would be, again, a decent reference point. When we met on November 5th, you didn't provide any specific direction whether any of those options seemed of immediate interest in terms of a code amendment, but it seems like still a decent reference point for the discussion. So I think for this evening's meeting, we're really looking for council direction as to, you know, what, if any, steps you want to take to take further action amending the code pertaining to residential, the residential subdivision process or the code as it pertains to other aspects of residential development in the city. So I will, at that point, certainly available for questions, but turn it back to council to discuss what next steps you might see as appropriate.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I have several questions. The first one, I just saw your memo tonight coming down that you sent us by email. How can a three-lot subdivision be on the quasi-judicial list if it's an administrative action by a city director?
We keep those on the city list just in the event that we would deny an application. The appeal process would go to city council. So there is...
But there is no appeal on an administrative. It's your decision. I mean, I tried to appeal it and I got shot down.
I don't have my...
Or are you talking about an appeal by the landowner? I mean, where does it talk? There is an appeal process, but that's only for the landowner and not for the neighborhood?
Right. Correct. Yes, for the property owner. So if I would deny administrative subdivision for whatever reason, the appeal process is the city council.
Okay. I'm certainly trying, would wish to change this. I believe it has to be changed. I think everybody is well-aware of my feelings on that. My thoughts were, and as I read through some of these things that came out of our meeting the other night, A is when we went into our recess, I was under the impression that that motion was going to apply citywide. And I was greatly surprised when it came back, Bel Air only. That just flabbergasted me. I think there are other ways to handle it, but that was certainly the impression I had going into that. And then I had to vote for it so I could protect at least the people in Bel Air. I had no choice. I think the easiest route to apply here is two things. Number one, I don't know why, I assume that in the past, three-lot subdivisions were part of minor subdivisions. I don't know why we can't just delete the administrative part of that code and make anything one to five go into the minor. And maybe staff could recommend a few, you know, a tweak there. But that requires city planning commission requires public notice, public hearings. And that would, I think, come a long ways in addressing this issue without creating a whole new set of rules and codes. And actually, it would cut down one code. The other thing I believe is, is to have a blanket statement and have a language in each subdivision designation that all subdivisions in the city, at some point in time, have to be approved by council, where the people's elected officials can get their eyes on it and hear about it and know what it is. Because otherwise, it's just happening in the background right now. But I'm not, I just believe that that's why they elected us, was when something's going to affect their neighborhood, they want their elected officials involved. And I believe if we went to the minor on that, that it would still eventually come to council and not just the planning commission. I can't remember now. I knew that this afternoon, and I looked at another code, and so I might be mixing them up.
Minor subdivisions just go to the planning commission?
Yeah. Well, I believe that should be changed then, so that all final approvals go to city council. Thank you.
Additional comments? Questions? Positions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as it relates to the issue that was brought forward to us, irrespective of the process that was gone through for that specific subdivision, the outcome of that subdivision, I think, was where the rubber met the road in the sense that it was the flag lot nature of this particular subdivision that caused the consternation of the residents and the neighbors and the like, because that flag lot subdivision matrix or what have you doesn't necessarily fit within that particular neighborhood. So I would be in support of a way to either limit the use of flag lots or, in the situation where a flag lot is being proposed, that that be given either a planning commission vote or city council so that we can at least deal with the, what appears to be, in my mind, the true issue in this particular subdivision was that it was a flag lot. So let's do what we can to limit those, eliminate them where necessary, because it seems like if we're not going to encourage flag lots in the code, then we should do everything we can to get rid of them. And it seems to be that, that's where the crux of the issue is. So I would be in support of a measure that would allow us to limit the use of flag lots. And if a flag lot is requested, that it be brought before either the planning commission or the council.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also say that the issue is, one of which, that we are subdividing a single-family lot and making it multiple single-family lots and kind of losing that character of, you know, one house, one family, and allowing this to be administratively done without really any neighborhood input and what that looks like. So, you know, I was actually really surprised that we didn't choose to study this citywide. I think that it's inherently because we have potential subdivisions already happening administratively. And I'd be interested to see where those areas are and what those neighborhoods think of what's going on. So I definitely think that whether it's minor or major subdivisions, that there should be some sort of public notice. And whether that's going just to planning commission or all subdivisions coming to council, I definitely think that the neighborhoods should at least... or all subdivisions coming to council, I definitely think that the neighborhoods should at least be notified.
Mr. Pahn.
I have a question or two. When a subdivision plot is being proposed, what is the requirement by the applicant to demonstrate or document the architectural intent? Or, you know, if it's geometry, are they really only -- do they only have to show essentially how the lot is going to be divided? Because I just want to kind of understand where kind of the plan-view organization of a lot is required versus some sort of actual kind of architectural study of this, and what's required either in our code or what's your practice as an administrator of this?
So it's both code and practice, so, you know, the code language in the subdivision regulation states that lots have to be -- has to be demonstrated that lots are buildable, right? So for a larger, typical, you know, multi-lot subdivision for new development, say, for single-family homes, we would look at, you know, kind of typical building envelopes based on the setbacks for that zoning district, or in the event of it being a planned residential development, whatever's on the ODP documents. In the case of this specific subdivision, that was, I think, certainly the biggest point of staff discussion with the applicant, is, you know, they were creating, you know, somewhat unique lot, right? Which is what I think we're hearing from the public. So we made them go through kind of extensive efforts to make sure that the existing -- the lot with the existing home was going to comply with all applicable setback requirements, and that the new lot would also be buildable and subject to the -- all the applicable setback requirements. So they went through a fairly extensive effort of showing how different house footprints could fit on that lot.
But it's, in some ways, that's speculative. In other words, not speculative to the existing structure and the setbacks, but speculative to the proposed architecture, because someone could request for a division without immediate intent to actually build. So what I'm hearing you say is that you would go through the exercise of a speculative or a typical, you know, they don't necessarily have to have an architect draw that, or anything like that. It would just be something like, "Well, yes, a house like this could fit." Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But it's, you know, they're not obligated to actually show, you know, what the architecture is, or it's one-story, or two-story, or three-stories, or whatever. It's just that, yeah, this would fit a typical residence per se and meet the required setbacks, and--
You don't want to create new lots that are going to, you know, trigger someone to apply for variance, which we likely wouldn't support.
Sure. Well, just a kind of a brief comment. I understand, and I think I'm not going to rehash everything I said last time, because it's not worth it, but I will say that some of my concerns do lie in this area when we start to talk about putting things up for notice. And I don't disagree with the notice, but I do disagree, I think, with getting to a place where we're allowing neighborhoods to adjudicate, you know, essentially, in many cases, you know, architectural character that isn't even pertinent, at the end of the day, to the discussion. I think that's a real -- wherever we go with this, we have to be very careful about that, whether it's Planning Commission or City Council. And we see it here. We went through these discussions and got into a whole bunch of things, and people were showing different, you know, things that were provocative, but not necessarily real, or even the intent. And this has happened. I mean, I've seen this happen before in Planning Commission and in City Council, and I think that -- I think notifying neighborhood is one thing. I think making, you know, allowing for the neighbors and someone who's intending to do something to have a dialogue, and for that then to create, hopefully, better outcomes, I don't disagree with that. But actually creating neighborhood kind of review board, essentially, that starts to guide how, you know, architecture is going to play out beyond the kind of 2D, you know, plan view, I think can become very problematic, and so I think we need to really consider that.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
These are comments that really should wait until after somebody has asked for consensus. But in thinking about it, I decided that maybe this would help people with their consensus, so I'm going to do it now. I have a flag lot behind me, and it is absolutely not a problem for anyone in the neighborhood. The neighborhood was created before we were chose a city, but it just so happens that this particular house would pass the code if it were being reviewed today. It's not a problem for anybody. And I am going to rehash some of the things you said. I'm really concerned about the particular 90-day ordinance that we have, because we're not treating people equally. We're applying one law to one group of people in one neighborhood only, while other people have something entirely different controlling them. This is not fair. People have a right to expect equal treatment under the law. And the other thing is, I want to say the same thing that George said. I, you know, people, as a general rule, are negative about any change, and I can imagine that the city infill would halt, because the neighborhood would be against any change to the neighborhood. For example, could you imagine a house that would skirt the -- or that would approach the bulk plane laws, passing a neighborhood scrutiny in District One? I think that's -- I mean, we know in advance that would never go forward. We just can't allow people to be in charge of what happens in their neighborhood. So whoever makes a consensus, I hope it takes those things into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I have just a couple of questions. I kind of mirror some of what was said about some neighborhood feedback, but I also do feel that, I mean, as a neighborhood, I think that there should be notice of, hey, these guys are going to subdivide. But I guess my question is, is -- and you might have answered this, and I wasn't sure if you answered it. I might just be up to lunch today. Is that common? Like, if you're in, like, Westminster or Denver, I mean, is it, like, what is common? If people subdivide lots, is it common? That, like, public notices? Like, what's common? What's standard practice? If someone is to subdivide their lot, if it's subdivided to two, subdivided to three, subdivided to four, five, I mean, what's kind of standard of practice for public notice?
I don't think I could say with certainty without, you know, we did, like we always do when we do code amendments, we did research, so presumably that informed the code amendments that we made in 2014. But the only thing I would say, because I don't know what the public notice looks like for a typical administrative subdivision, but I would say that most communities have some process for some level of lot-line adjustments through an administrative meeting, so that not everything goes to a public hearing. So our tiered structure of administrative PC and City Council is very typical. What those numbers look like certainly varies a lot, I'm sure, but whether or not the public notice is required, I don't -- I can't say. And I've, you know, suggested in the staff report why I think we don't provide public notice, or we don't do neighborhood meetings either for administrative subdivisions, is it's really just this balancing act of what discussion are you engaging in the neighborhood yet?
Yeah, it's a slippery slope.
It's just how much substantive input would they be able to have? So if these people in the Bel Air subdivision, by way of example, had been part of the process, which is fine, I understand if Y City Council wants to change that, those rules, but if they would have been part of the process and come to the table objecting to the flag lot, it does create a fairly awkward situation in that we have three criteria under which to review flag lots that are codified, and at least in my opinion, it clearly met those criteria. So it creates a little bit of an awkward conversation with the neighborhood, in that they're being invited to the table to talk, but what level of input they'll have substantively on that is going to be largely dictated by the real quantified numbers that are in the zoning code.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. I think part of this conversation also completely ties into the ADU conversation we need to have, and also, I do believe that the bulk plane conversation needs to, for all of our residential areas, needs to be in play, because if you look at this one specifically, they are building within their buildable building envelope. They're building envelopes larger than what they're actually building, because the bulk plane's not there to be regulating that. But also, like, the ADUs, there are times where if we have, if we get to a point where ADUs are approved, then there may not be somebody trying to split off their lot into a second piece to build a whole other home. So I think these go a lot hand in hand. And, you know, if it's kind of like flag lots that we're thinking are kind of the culprit, then we don't have to necessarily get rid of them, but we can, you know, talk about things like the, you know, currently, it has to have a pole portion has to have 25 feet onto the main street. And we can look at change in those things to 30 feet, or, you know, like, we can look at change in those types of things. But if someone has a rectangular lot, and their home's on one end of it, and it's three-quarters of an acre, and they want to subdivide it and build another home on it, I don't under -- I just don't think, I think it's overboard for them to have to go through neighborhood meetings and whatnot to be able to do that, when it really would fit completely within our regulations. And, you know, I just think, like, when in doubt, go with your policy. So if we want to change our policy, then that's where we need to start looking at it.
Mr. Urban.
I think that, as it relates to trying to come up with some kind of middle ground here, that I agree that the flag lot issue, it could be, we could nuance that, we could work that out. And as it relates to public comment, I don't think it's appropriate in the situations where it's administrative that we notify the public or have some kind of public meeting, because in that regard, all they're doing is communicating to city staff, and based on the criteria that city staff is, there isn't real discretion to be made there. So if those public comments, public hearing, the public process were to be relegated to the situations where the Planning Commission or the City Council comes into play, I think that would be more appropriate. And so I would, one of my questions is, as it relates to how many administrative subdivisions have been made since 2014?
Yeah, we've done a little bit of research anticipating that question might come up, and I'd say we process between five and 10 a year.
So, you know, if you're looking at that number of subdivisions, and we have one out of that number turning up somewhat sour here as it relates to the neighborhood response to that, I don't know that we're going to be able to get administratively 100% of the cases handled perfectly, and that's where there might be some kind of relief valve or option to allow either the neighbors or the property owner to appeal that up, as opposed to just leaving it in the hands of the city staff, so that we're not saying that, we're not doing away with administrative subdivisions, but in the event of some kind of issue that that's kicked up, or in the event of them wanting to do a flag lot, that's kicked up, something where we have some kind of relief valve to deal with these types of issues in the future. So I don't know what anybody else thinks about that.
Mr. Pahn.
Yeah, I mean, it's been stated, I want to restate something, and it's in the November 5th documents as well, and we're kind of touching around it, which is that there's some math to this, right? I mean, and you're using the word ministerial inside of this, and I'll ask in a second for you to explain that a little bit. But essentially, by code, we've said, you know, if it meets these requirements, whether it's square footage, acreage, setbacks, distance, it's literally math, and if they meet those, if they meet those things, then, you know, technically, there's not really any basis to not approve it. I think, in fact, it's, you know, they meet the code, and it's essentially, you're checking the boxes, it meets the code, and that's okay. And again, going back to the architecture piece, that becomes just kind of a placeholder to confirm, you know, that there isn't anything, any geometries that are somehow abnormal that would perhaps not allow for something to happen. I certainly understand the flag lot and the criteria that we have, and Councilmember Hoppe alluded to, you know, you could change that, you could make it 30 instead of 25 or something to be more restrictive. But again, at some point, that'll become math, and if someone comes in to subdivide, and it's 30, and, you know, and they've met those requirements, then by code, we don't really have a basis to deny whether it's administratively, or the Planning Commission, or City Council. So even if we go ahead and do this, if we codify these, you know, the math, we can have a public hearing, but we're putting ourselves in, you know, in a little bit of a tight spot, because there's no basis, you could have that hearing. If they meet all the math, there's no basis for us to deny. And so, again, I'm okay having a procedure of input and dialogue, to the extent that that dialogue can be constructive, and that the different bodies, whether it's the administrative body, Planning Commission, or the City Council, are able to stay, you know, basically do what they're doing and not go outside the lines. But I've seen this. It's hard. I've seen it on the Planning Commission, we've seen it on the Council. When you start to get into use, architecture and things like that, it starts, you're not talking about the math anymore, you're talking about something else. And that's not, you know, at least in this topic, that is not the point. The math is the math. If it meets the square footage, it meets it, and we don't have a basis to deny. So I think if we're going to, you know, and I think that's what option one and two kind of point to in your November 5th memo, and that maybe you could explain ministerial if I'm explaining it incorrectly, but I think we don't, if they meet the math, they don't, we don't have a reason to deny. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I mean, I think everything you said is accurate. I mean, generally, council deals with two types of agenda items in my world. You know, quasi-judicial cases where, you know, you guys are, you're somewhat bound by, again, the rules, and legislative items, like if you're choosing to make a code amendment. But with legislative items, you have broad ability to make your own decisions and change the code as you see fit as the policy leaders of the city. Quasi-judicial actions, you're acting as a jury, essentially, and if, a judge, really. And so you're looking at the facts of the case, what is codified, and typically, it's numbers, and determining whether it meets those requirements. And if it does, you're generally supposed to approve those things. Now, you certainly have some discretion in interpreting the code in many regards. Ministerial actions, which is discussed in the November 5th memo, are really a narrower class of quasi-judicial types of land use applications, where you just frankly have less discretion, right? It's very, and subdivisions really are the most ministerial of things that we deal with, in that if it meets the rules, as codified, you're really compelled to approve that application. And, you know, if you were to be challenged on that decision, if you didn't have a sound basis, you know, you'd be subject to that decision being potentially overturned by a court of law. So that's really what the ministerial types of cases are, are the ones where the rules are fairly narrowly focused. You know, we know what our local street section is, we know what our minimum lot size is, we know what the setbacks are. If it meets all those things, just less discretion to approve it without a sound reason.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be a little disjointed here, because I've been making notes as people have made comments, and I'd like to respond a little bit to them. So number one here that's on the top of my list is, this was not strictly a math issue. There are three exceptions, or three criteria that must be met in order to do an administrative lot. And the second one of those is that, in the opinion of the administrator, it must be the best way to develop a property, and that's a judgment call. And I'm not sure we need to put all of that authority in one person's hands, that's why we have elected representatives. So it's not just, in this case, a math call. Number two, related to that, something Ms. Hoppe brought up, is it's not two rectangular lots. lots. That's got a property line that zigzags all over the place and try to fit shoe horn, two lots into that property. So this wasn't just a straightforward math call. Even Mr. Johnstone admitted that they had to come back 16 times to try and find a way to make this work. And I submit that if there were enough discrepancies and issues going on there, that it became an issue of the exception rule, number two, that the judgment call should have been made then to put it into the variance process. And that would have allowed for public comment and for things to come out in the open before this took place. I have a question for Mr. Johnstone because after the meeting last night, and I have not seen really official maps or site of this site, but it was, I was told, and you can confirm this for me maybe, that one of the reasons they're tearing down the existing garage is because it would have been in the lot line. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not in the weeds on that. I think it would have, there's, I think that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so there again, they had to actually destroy part of the existing structure in order to do this work. So that, to me, seems like it should have flagged a variance call and, and moved this into a different process. And that didn't happen. As far as the will of the people, I mean, we're here to represent the people, all of the people. Now, I voted against the people before. If you ever recall, we had a lot of angry people up here that didn't want to put in that storage facility on Youngfield. They followed all the rules, the, the builder did. He was within code, but we had 20, 30 angry people in here. And it still bugs me at night, I still wake up in the night in a, in a sweat dreaming or thinking about that five-story building that I, I voted yes on against the neighborhood. So it's not like I'm not for private property rights, it's not like I don't try and see what's fair, I try and judge it on a case by case basis. But we could have, and we had the authority, even though that builder was within code, to deny his, him that five-story building. And we had the other rezoning deal right down the other street at the U there, where the one that was next to the creek. And we voted against letting somebody build on that. That was just math, it was just a lot, he just wanted to build on it, but we didn't let him. So we have a lot of precedent here for we try and take a look at what the whole neighborhood is looking at and does the rights of the many overcome the rights of the one? Or as Mr. Spock said, sometimes the needs of the one must fall to the needs of the It's, it's not always just that cut and drive. I also question why this would be on the quasi judicial list because technically, we shouldn't be talking about it right now. We're breaking the rules. If it's on the quasi judicial list, to my way of thinking, and we'll have to get Mr. Doll involved, it shouldn't go on the quasi judicial list unless there's an appeal. Right now, we're just talking about an administrative action.
It's already been approved. Yeah, it has been approved, but the, again, the reason-
So how is it quasi judicial?
It could have been, that's why it, if, if it got appealed to you, if, if I had denied the application. So there's, there's several different things that go on the quasi list, even though they start out as administrative actions. This would be one of them, subdivisions. The other would be special use permits, those start out as an administrative review. We have no idea whether there's, there's three conditions under which those go to city council. And we don't know how that's going to play out during staff's review. So we don't want you to, we want to set you up for success, right? So anything that could get before you, even if it may not, we put it on that list to protect you from ex parte-
I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Doll about that, that seems past awkward to me, but that's, I'm just a country boy, a farmer. And I'll try to break this real short. I see an alarming trend even before I got elected in that we seem to be wanting to, quotes, in the, in the name of efficiency, streamline the processes. And you know what happens with streamlining? It gets farther and farther and more steps away from the people. And I think the city council has, has a real responsibility not to keep abdicating their authority and the very reason for why we are here in order to streamline the process. Every action that affects a neighborhood should have some route of appeal, some way where the people who think now they're just the little people actually have a place to go, to where they can voice their opinions and potentially get some kind of remedy, some action that may or may not be required or needed. And so in the, in the next year, that's one place I'm going to be heading, is to try and make sure that this council, as we stand right now, quits abdicating responsibility away from council. We have the time. I mean, that's why we're here. If we have to be here for a meeting until 1:00 in the morning, I don't care. That's our job. That's what we're paid to do. That's what we pledged to do when we were elected. And someone may say, well, it's just a two-lot subdivision. But for the people that live around that two, two-lot subdivision, it's a big deal. And we have to take it seriously. That's our job. And I think there was a way to do this and keep this citywide, this more current moratorium, if we had to accept three lots and say someone that's turned into, already turned in an application is exempt from the moratorium, we could have done that and made it citywide. But we kicked the can down the road one more time. And three months from now, somebody else is going to just have turned in an application. Or maybe they know it's coming and they're going to turn in an application two months earlier than what they really had planned to, just in order to fit underneath the timeline. At some point in time, you got to pull the Band-Aid off the sore. And we failed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Matthews, you are correct. We are, we have been on a, a, an attempt to streamline a lot of processes because that's what former council, councils have told us, us staff. So it's, it's unfair to, to blame Ken for these decisions. Ken, Ken did make, make a recommendation to get rid of flag lots. Previous council said no. And that's why we have the code that we have today. And Ken did his best job to interpret the code as it's written today. So I, I understand that that's your opinion today, and if that's what this council wants to do. But previous councils have given us a direction to streamline, and that's why a lot of these things are in place as they are today.
Okay, I'd like to respond to that.
Okay.
Years ago, when I was a product manager, I had a young man come into me and talk, and talk to me because we had a group of people, it was our support team. And he couldn't stand any longer, came in and talked to me and he said, I don't understand it. In this last decision, you just supported us. Our, our manager says you hate us. And I said, that's right, I supported you because based on the facts of this case, I think you took the wrong action. It's not that I hate you guys. In that, two years ago, I thought you took the wrong action and I didn't support that wrong action, I voted in favor of the customers. It's not that I like or hate or dislike anybody, it's just in this, this case, I think we made a bad decision. And that's also my job, Ken, to mention, to bring that out. The next two weeks from now, I may say Ken made absolutely the right decision, I don't care if 30, 30 neighbors are, are upset. It's just the case, and I hope you understand that, it's not a personal affront. Thank you.
Additional comments?
One thing that I'm, that I'm kind of struggling with or looking for is that we should be a government of laws and not a government of men and women. So that we should have at our disposal the tools to objectively look at, at situations like this and to be able, and, and to have done the homework and created the laws and regulations that, that allow our citizens to be able to have firm knowledge that if they, if they march down a course, that's a lawful course in our city, that, that they are able to have the, the force of the law go with them. And the contrary should be, should be the same. If they're marching down a course of action that is not legal, then, then we should have a recourse to that. But, but we need to have, we need to have clear and distinct laws and ordinances that we can, that we can justify our actions on. We should, we should have, you know, we should have a set of criteria that says if these, if these provisions are met, then that is the law and that goes ahead. And, and I'm sorry for all of the people that come in to a, to a situation and, and want to be aggrieved and perhaps are justifiably aggrieved in their point of view that, that they want, they, they don't want that law to be applied. But it's our job to apply the law. And in public hearings, we sit as jurors. We don't sit as legislators, we sit as jurors to, to, to judge the facts and apply the facts against the law as it is and arrive at a decision that honors the law. So I don't know, you know, I'm not sure what that says about, you know, the options that we have to go forward, but I think in doing that, in these cases, we are adjudicating property rights. And property rights are, are a combination of the rights of the individual that owns the property and the rights of the community that, that the property and the individuals reside in or, or conduct business in. You know? And, and I think if we, if we, if we don't want flag lots, then we ought to say, we don't want flag lots in our, in our community. Or if we want flag lots in our community, then we want them to be shaped in a certain configuration. Or if we want flag lots in our community, then those flag, those things go before the public because we've, we've decided as a, as a body, a legislative body, that, that the community should have a, a, a interest, a competing interest with the private property rights of the people that own the property, and we should do that beforehand. It's not something you do at the, at the, at the back end of the table. This is, happens ahead of time. And you have, you have a discussion, you have, as we are doing tonight, we're seeking different points of view. We've heard different points of view in the council meetings because we invite the public to come and talk to us, and I think that's good. But we are, we are legislators, and first, we may need to make good legislation, however we decide to adjudicate those property rights. And secondly, when we sit as jurors to, to adjudicate those, that we have the basis and facts and in law to make good decisions.
Ms. Hoppe.
I agree, and like I said, when in doubt, we should follow the policies we have set. So if we don't like those policies, start talking about how we can work to change those policies. Talking about what's happened in the past, it's not getting us anywhere at this point. And giving us lectures about what shouldn't, should not have happened is not getting us anywhere. Yes, I use the example of a rectangular lot because it's the easiest one to just lay out verbally without having to draw a big map around it. But not every lot in Weir is the same. Hardly any of them are the same. We are not Highlands Ranch. We did not get built all at once where somebody went down with spray paint and sprayed all the lots and said, this is where the house goes, this is where the driveway goes, everybody's lots the same. That's why we need to do things to make sure that we are making good decisions on the way we can guide our change because we can't just say, hey, everybody, in this section, you're no longer allowed to paint your house green because we're not that kind of community. And so the things that I am okay with looking at is, A, again, I think ADUs and bulk planes completely go hand in hand in with this. And I would be happy to look at changing maybe the flag lots if we wanted to, or keeping them the way they are. And I would also look at overlay zones for specific parts of our community. If we go the overlay zone area, however, that's not getting done in the 90 days that we have. There's no way that's getting done that quickly. So, I mean, those, I mean, those are the, that's where I'm at as far as looking at, this is the seat we're sitting in now, not what happened weeks ago or a month ago or in 2014.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot's been said about making decisions and coming to some kind of path with, with respect to a particular subdivision or, or, or policy. And I think it's important to point out that when you make a decision, you can make a good decision or you can make a bad decision. And it's the same way with city staff. It's not to say every decision that is made by city staff is going to be perfect, but in the instance where a decision is imperfect, there should be some mechanism or ability to either adjudicate that decision in a different format, either in front of the planning commission or in front of council, but to just assume that all decisions being made will always be correct, then why are we making decisions to begin with? If, if, if a decision can never be wrong, why are we making the decisions to begin with? So in my mind, the, the mechanism that we have in place at present is devoid of, of an ability to either appeal or otherwise bring it out of that administrative process and into a, a public forum where a, where some kind of set of criteria is checked to say, this deserves to be brought up the flagpole, this deserves to be seen in front of the city council for X reasons. But when a city staff member is making those decisions, we have to account for those instances where that decision is wrong. And how do we deal with a wrong decision? Do we just say, well, that was what was made, so that's what we got to stick with? There's got to be some sort of relief valve in this process that we can insert to allow. And the outcome might come back to be the exact same. And it's not to say we want to change the outcome, but there at least has to be some appeal process for every decision.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I, I guess my question to that manner is like, but then where do we stop on the administrative process? Because I, I'm just thinking to myself, like, I just put a shed up and I didn't need an administrative decision because I followed the 120 square feet and so much, you know, you know, from, out setback from the yard and, you know, and from the front and the back and side and all that. But I, I know that sometimes they make administrative decisions on variances. So does that mean every variance, variance then needs to come to the city? If, if, well, all of a sudden, somebody wants a 12-foot fence and they're asking for a variance and now my neighbor doesn't like it, so now I can fight, fight, you know, staff's decision of the okay for the variance? You know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think at some point, it's like, you know, when is it like crazy? You know, that like anything anyone does, that it's like, hell no, we ain't going to go kind of thing. And, and I mean, I, I, I mean, at what point is it kind of some administrative decisions? I mean, I, I respect the point. I mean, I, I still kind of squabble with at least having the public notice on subdivisions and that kind of stuff. I, 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 I see both sides of it. I see the side of it that, you know, if it was in my neighborhood and stuff, I want the voice. But I also see the other point of it that, you know, it is very, you know, it's meeting some criteria, and if it meets that criteria, no matter how emotional I get about it and how, no matter how much I don't like it, and no matter how much when I bought that house, I bought it because there was a field in front of me, or whatever else my emotional place is taking me, which we've all heard on that dais, it's still, you know, very, one, two, three. So, you know, I, I think it's a slippery slope because again, like then, you know, if we, again, if we have that, you know, right to appeal, then, I mean, so can I appeal, you know, my neighbor's 13-foot fence? You know? I mean, where does that appeal end? And does it become complete craziness and not, not productive for our taxpayers or, or anybody? You know, I, I guess that's just my, I'm not saying yay, nay, great news, good news, bad news, but at some point, it's probably going to get crazy or could get crazy.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Our attorney is not here tonight, but, so I guess I, I can't expect a real legal answer. But am I right that because in this particular case, in the Baller neighborhood, that is a situation in which criteria has been met, it's been approved, so I don't think that we can change anything for them? Is that correct?
Not for that one, but I think it's just in general.
That's correct.
So whatever we do in, in terms of changing the law will not apply to that situation?
Correct. Mr. Pond.
I don't know if I have any-
I don't know if I have any specific opinions about what the next step is, but I want to just reflect some of the timelines that are in the memo, and reiterate one thing that I did say on the dais last week. This is a tight turnaround to go in front of Planning Commission, and then have a first and second reading in front of City Council, and that doesn't even take into account, as it states in the memo, that there may be other outreach that we would want to do somehow, and that would have to squeeze in there at some point. So, very, very tight timetable, and I think that that's not impossible, but I think it means that you have to kind of make a decision, you have to make a decision and do something, and you gotta, and otherwise, we're going to be at the end of this moratorium, and that's going to be it. And I was afraid of that, and I stated as such when we were talking last Monday. And I will just go back to the fact that, and restate something that I've said about the NRS in a different way. We've talked a lot about trying to take a holistic look at it. That's just one way of stating it. I'll actually say, I'll restate what we talked about last Monday, which is, last time we, the most recent time that we did a large-scale change of Chapter 26, it was a kind of a repeal and replace the whole thing, because there were so many moving parts and connecting parts, that you couldn't necessarily just kind of take one, you know, one paragraph of it, or one subsection of it, and effectively just take that by itself. We had pulled enough levers that the entire, you know, the entire chapter kind of was, you know, taken out, considered, adjusted, and put back in. And I'm pretty sure we're going to be in that situation again, or want to be in that situation, when we're doing, when we're looking at the NRS results and those things. And to Ms. Hoppe's point, the, you know, these things like bulk plane and ADUs, I 100% agree, are very much tied to the policy geometries and math and other things, inclusive of, you know, what bodies they go to, what's administrative and what's not. And so if we don't consider them, and we will not have time to consider those things in this 90-day period, there's no way, then we're very much likely going to be changing this again when we come back around at some point. And that's, and I'm not saying, you know, I'm just kind of, that's cautionary. I think at this point, that's almost assuredly what's going to happen, is that we're going to kind of, we're going to do it, and we're going to have to do it, and we're going to end up doing it again, because there's going to be some other levers that are going to start to cause us to have to rewrite sections and references and chapters, and we're not going to get it right in this period of time. And again, not that we have to, but, you know, just kind of, we're under a tight timeline, and we really do, with a lot of other information that's still in process and coming to us, are likely going to have to tie this all together in what will be a lengthy wrap-up to the NRS and adjustment to Chapter 26.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. So this is a little off-topic, but it ties into the broader scope of this conversation. But do we have a retreat on our calendar? I mean, it seems like this is some comprehensive conversations that needs to be going on with us as a council. And as soon as those NRS, as soon as it comes out, and a lot of that consensus is made within the community, I want to hit the ground running, and I want to stop kicking the can down the road, because I agree that the zoning, subdivisions, ADUs, bulk plane, these are all a conversation that we have agreed needs to be taken in a holistic manner. And I think that all of us sitting down together and going through the retreat after the NRS would be extremely beneficial, even if we start that process before the NRS, so we can start pinpointing where in the charter and where in the code that we see changes coming down, and what that may look like. So that's just a suggestion. I know it's a little, it's not within the consensus of this issue, but I think looking down the road is a good idea.
Well, I'll go to the mayor pro tem. I think the short answer may be that we don't have that scheduled at this time.
I shook my head. I shook my head. Sorry. Here's my verbal, "No, we don't have it."
Okay, thank you. But that suggestion is certainly noted, I think, you know? Okay, good discussion. We've got a temporary moratorium in place. Staff is looking for direction on how to move forward with that. Do we have any consensus on, or direction from the council on how to move the staff forward? Mr. Matthews?
Tried to prestate that. I think that we should eliminate administrative subdivisions, take the 1, 2, 3 size lots, and include them in minor subdivisions. And whether as a general statement in the beginning of the code, I don't think that would work, but we'd probably have to change those. I don't know if there's another place in the code where we'd have to change to make the statement that all subdivision approvals eventually have to come to council. And that would be my consensus.
Well, let's see. A show of hands for that consensus. Okay, that doesn't move forward. So do we have another path? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as it relates to that consensus, if all subdivisions have to go to council, I would agree that there is some timing issues with that irrespective of how much time we sit here to go through each case. I think that the process we have in place relative to the one, and up to three, maybe even five lines, that that can be handled administratively unless there is a problem, or unless it fits a criteria of being a flag lot, or some other criteria you want to throw in there. So I would make a consensus that we consider an administrative subdivision for, as it stands, I think, is it 1 through 3? And then, in the event that it's a flag lot, that would be kicked up to the minor subdivision process through the planning commission. But that all others wouldn't necessarily have any kind of public hearing, or city council, or planning commission, because it is that administrative process. If we've had 40 of them, and only one of them have risen to this level of consternation, I think that tells us of what we can expect to see. And we're just, we're trying to solve for keeping something like this from happy again. So if it's a flag lot, and that they want a minor subdivision, then that has to come before council. But if it isn't a flag lot, and they want a minor subdivision, and it meets the math, then they get that subdivision. No?
Okay. So, Mr. Urban's put a consensus motion to the council. Does everyone understand what the consensus motion is? Let's see a show of hands on the consensus motion. Okay, I don't see consensus on that. Is there another, is there another opportunity for consensus? Ms. Davis.
It's just a quick question. On some of these, and you might not know, because neighbors might not know, do you get complaints ahead of time? Like, if, like, as they're going through the administrative process, do you get complaints from neighbors ahead of time? Or was it, like, in this case, was it kind of after the fact?
After the fact. And we don't typically, you know, there's not public notice, right? So there's not the neighborhood meeting. So the neighborhood doesn't even necessarily know that anything is happening.
I know. They usually know that we're getting a...
In this case, there was...
...fancy quicker than I do.
There was construction activity on the site, because the existing cottage house was being remodeled, so they knew some things were happening.
That's precisely the problem. How can they come in and ask for what's going on if they don't know? I don't, you know, we get stuff here in council that we don't know what's going on, that things have gone through the building department, and it just, all of a sudden, we get a letter from Janice that there's a ribbon cutting taking place. So how do the people, you know, I realize they live there, but if this is just all paperwork, you know, how are they going to know?
Ms. Hoppe.
So I don't completely disagree with what Zach was trying to do there with flag lots, but I don't think that it's the appropriate way to address this moratorium that we're currently facing. I do think that we could potentially look at flag lots, but that's not the only piece of flag lots that I'd like to look at. And so, flag lots in itself, at some point, may be something that we can look at later, if someone wanted to support me in adding that to the agenda in the future, then I'd be happy to ask for that. But I think for our moratorium currently is for the Bel Air subdivision. So how are we going to address this specific moratorium that we have 90 days for? How are we going to deal with, what are we going to do to be able to lift this moratorium? And I don't know if that's, and I'm not making a consensus here, but is it that we lift it, or do we extend it, or?
Mr. Pond.
Well, I guess, probably not a popular response in some ways, but honestly, my feeling right now is that, is to allow it to lapse. I didn't vote for it, and I do see some, you know, some problems. I thought it was a reasonable idea in its genesis, but at the end of the day, I was concerned about how we were going to play this out within a limited period of time. But I appreciate council member Dozeman's, you know, more than once, talking about how we can move through issues and be timely about it, although it's never going to go as quickly as perhaps you want. But I think it's worthwhile to listen to that. And so when I say I'd prefer essentially to allow this to lapse, and for us to continue to discuss these items, because I think they're important discussions, I think perhaps in addition to the retreat, there is something we can get more, you know, more specific in our calendar about how we want, you know, how we are getting input from NRS, what are the issues, how do we think the, you know, the results are going to come from the NRS, how do we think it's going to come through the planning commission, how do we think we're going to address Chapter 26, and really even look, you know, look at a longer calendar on this, and set our work in front of us, and start working on it. In my mind, this isn't actually the work, because this is, you know, it's a strange kind of thing, in a 90-day emergency moratorium. I don't think we should spend our time trying to figure this exact thing out. I think we should spend our time charting a course to getting to the end of the NRS, continuing dialogue amongst ourselves and the community along the way, and figuring out, you know, how to stay on course with that, you know. So let's, maybe we talk about how do we set a calendar, and really look at that as a dynamic thing. Staff has, you know, stuff that they need to do, planning commission, council, NRS, community, what do we want to do? Might not be the easiest thing, but we have a new energetic mayor pro tem who I know wants to engage this. I just put that all in.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. So in order for me to make a decision on this issue, I feel as if I need more information. And so there's been a lot of discussion about the overlay zones, and I think, I don't know if we've specifically directed staff to kind of start exploring that, but I really would like to see what that would look like, and how that would be applied. Because, you know, talking about it, you know, it's just theoretical, but if I'm able to see it, and see how it would look if we were to actually move forward with that, I think that would give me better information as to, okay, yes, this is a good idea, versus, okay, maybe this works here, but not there, and some of those more in-the-weeds type decisions. So as far as this moratorium goes specifically, I would like to make a consensus to direct staff to begin looking at what overlay zones are possible, and kind of outlining what that would look like.
Well, that's consensus. Is that a call for consensus?
But I'd like to caution everybody that I don't think the staff has the time to do that within this moratorium time period. So I just would like to put that out there.
You know, I guess, you know, just, well, you asked for consensus. Is there a consensus on staff, or consensus among council to Ms. Dozeman's?
Just another comment. I can vote yes on that consensus, with the understanding that we still have to address the moratorium, and I will be having an additional consensus request afterwards.
Yeah, this doesn't, this doesn't solve the issue of the moratorium in the Bel Air neighborhood. So if you want to, so the consensus is to direct staff to do some more information on overlay districts. Is that what we're...
Yes, because it'll feed into the larger conversation. Yes.
Is there consensus? Okay, so there's consensus among...
Just a clarification, that's not specific to Bel Air.
No. I personally would like to see what the overlay zones would look like throughout the city. And so, like, we've kind of talked about designating historical districts, we've talked about, I mean, this, we have specifically talked about Bel Air, and it kind of played into the subdivision conversation, but I don't even know what we would begin to look at.
Learn what the tool is more than anything.
Yes, exactly.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
I think George sort of glanced on this issue, but if we're not going to have any effect on the current object of the neighbor's ire, there really is no value to this. I think we ought to just let it lapse. It doesn't affect anybody.
Mr. Matthews.
Well, the whole idea of the moratorium was that it would give us time to consider a future action within 90 days that may not actually answer the question, but maybe we do another moratorium. I mean, that was the whole, the whole idea was to get staff to come up with some information for us on some possibilities what we can do, and overlay zones were mentioned. And not sure that we expected that would get done in 90 days. But staff, I mean, I would think, you know, that maybe at some point in time, we're going to have to suggest that it's going to take another, let's say, 180 days, to be able to fully flesh this issue out. And so, 80 days from now, we do another action to aid direct staff to give us an actual final thing within 180 days, but meantime, continue to somehow do the moratorium, just like we did with emergency, emergency rooms, off-site emergency rooms, where we started out with a short moratorium, and then continued the moratorium on for a year, and tabled it for a year. And I'm not saying we have to table it for a year, but that was really the idea of the moratorium, was 90 days was a vehicle we had in place in order to take a breath, and then figure out what we could reasonably do within 90 days, but expecting we were going to have to take another action. And I'm not sure we have figured out how to do that yet. What was the whole objective of the moratorium is, we haven't figured out how to do that yet.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to council member Fitzgerald's comments, obviously, the current moratorium does not affect the property subdivision that was made by staff. That's something that cannot be changed, because it was done. The impetus for providing cover, if you will, for the Bel Air neighborhood in this moratorium was the knowledge that a full citywide moratorium wasn't going to pass within this group. Thereby, we narrowed it down to the Bel Air neighborhood, in hopes it would pass, to provide cover for that neighborhood, to keep another subdivision from coming into play while we're still trying to work through this. So it does provide protections in the interim for the neighborhood to not see another subdivision come that meets the math, and that does everything according to code as it's written now, and giving us the legroom to work through this. And I think that the reasonable compromise is to say that administrative subdivisions can continue as they have. However, if you are subdividing a lot, and it creates a flag lot, that requires a planning commission review, and possibly kicked up to city council if there's some kind of letter of protest, or consternation, or some mechanism that says, if there's an outside issue with this property, then it gets kicked up to city council. But I think a reasonable compromise is to say administrative subdivisions, 1 to 3, you can have them all day long. If you want to do a flag lot in that, has to go to planning commission. If there's no public discord with that subdivision, then it wouldn't go any further than that, and planning commission would sign off on it, and it would be done with it. And I think that that would help the Bel Air neighborhood, it would help the city. And so while the moratorium is neighborhood-specific, the And so while the moratorium is neighborhood-specific, the solution, I think, can be citywide.
Ms. Davis, did you have anything?
Yeah, I think, I think it was my understanding from what Mr. Dahl said at the last meeting is that we can only have one emergency, like you can't continue on with emergency ordinances. I believe the example he used with the emergency room was, I think that was just an ordinance that we continued on. So I think if anything, we'd need to check with Mr. Dahl. Correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, but I think it was, that was an ordinance that we continued on, but it wasn't an emergency ordinance. So we can't keep pulling the 90-day, 90-day. We'd have to change that emergency ordinance to an ordinance. And, you know, I don't know if that means that a happy medium in the end might be Mr. Urban's suggestion of, you know, flag lots for, you know, a certain amount of time while we look at the studies and that type of thing. But I, my understanding was we can't do emergencies, emergency.
That's correct. It required two readings of full ordinance, yeah.
Mr. Pond?
You know, I, I agree with the idea of, of talking about overlay districts and all that, but, and, you know, the information that we should get is not only the conceptual and legislative, you know, you know, concepts of looking at overlay districts, but also the, what we have to do and what it, you know, what it means throughout the code. I, I think, obviously, overlay districts would have to be articulated in, I believe, the comprehensive plan, and then we would have to be deciding whether or not to comprehend, how the comprehensive plan is being amended. And of course, with the kind of NRS where, where it is, we may kind of decide that the comprehensive plan should completely be redone. So I think all of that, by the way, if you do, if you do get the direction to bring that back, has to be taken into account. So it's not just what is an overlay district? How do you draw it? What, what type of things can you put to it? It's going to be, how do you make those active? And what are all the steps in making those active? And by the way, that's where the discussion is going to become complicated, because some of those steps are, are the very same steps that we're going to have to do with other things that we've just touched on tonight, like ADUs and bulk plan, pressing against the comp plan, pressing against Chapter 26, et cetera. And so, you know, I just, I think all of, and that's why I will go back to the fact that I think we should calendar this out and really, you know, kind of understand, you know, we're pointing down a road of making changes. What are the steps that we need to take or should take, you know, and, and how do those things all, all line out in time? And, you know, that is one of the nuances of this is that we've put ourselves in a, in an awkward time, you know, period, and that's just the nature of the emergency moratorium. But it creates this, you know, somewhat artificial, you know, 90-day thing that then you have to, if you do have to, you know, transition it into an ordinance, we have to do a first and second reading and, you know, and it's going to take away from time of discussion, it's going to take away from, from some of the planning time that we might otherwise take.
Well, we, you know, we got us into a, you know, we took this temporary moratorium because there appeared to be a clear and present danger for the Bel Air neighborhood. Is that correct? I mean, is that why we went into a temporary moratorium? And do those conditions still exist? Have they been abated? Or, or is there something that we, that we can do now or should do now, you know, to, to rectify that situation? Or, you know, what, what I'm hearing is that there's really a lot of sort of medium and longer-term discussion and, and debate and, and queries to our community that, that may or may not impact the, a clear and present danger in a particular neighborhood in our city. We also have the option, I mean, there is a consensus, there can be a consensus to do nothing further right now with respect to this temporary moratorium and just let it, let it continue. And maybe, you know, maybe between now and 90 days from now, we'll have a different feeling about it. But we've been, you know, we've been on this for about 45 minutes. We've had a good discussion. And is there, you know, but, but I'm looking for consensus among the council.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll make that consensus, just because it's, it's essentially what I said earlier, and it's not just to say let this, let this ride and without discussion. It was very specific. So I would say, ask for consensus to, to actually actively look at a, at the, a calendar of work that, you know, starts to reflect the, this discussion tonight as well as other discussions that we've had previously related to either the NRS work and other Chapter 26 items, including the comprehensive plan that, that we need to be working on, and try to have a discussion on calendaring that work and understanding, understanding what that is. And that we spend time on that and allow, and allow this moratorium to, to pass. That'd be my consensus.
Well, there's an effort at consensus. I've got four. Four out of seven is a majority. That's not exactly a consensus. Is there, is there additional thinking on this? Ms. Dozeman?
So I agree with the setting a calendar of events to carry on this conversation, but I mean, the reason why I was hesitant at our regular business meeting to only apply this to one area of the city is because then we're setting them apart and we're having laws and rules that only apply to them, and my concern was that it doesn't apply to the rest of the city. So while I agree with some of the consensus that you have come to and would love to see it applied to Bel Air, it's also the fact that I want it to apply everywhere, not, and that, and that's the issue. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Ms. Davis?
I, I'm just curious, because I, I think, I, I think one of the words is, is a clear and present threat. Again, I walk my dogs in that neighborhood all of the time. And it's funny, because my sister was just looking at a house in that neighborhood, and she pointed out this house on the corner as sticking out like a sore thumb, because it was so different than the rest of the neighborhood, because the other houses were very different, and this is this little teeny house. So I guess my other question is, is there any, I mean, I don't, knowing that neighborhood, I don't know that there's any lots that could really be subdivided like this lot unless you completely take out a house. I mean, I guess you could do that, and it's a possibility, but, I mean, how probable? I mean, I guess that's the thing. Are we setting this up for a situation that is not probable? So, I mean, I appreciate, and, you know, we don't want to be the bad guys in that, but, I mean, just knowing as I'm walking, I mean, there's a couple down, but again, that one takes up more of the corner. I, I mean, I guess that's the thing. I mean, is it a clear and present danger and is it probable? I mean, yes, please.
We did a little bit of analysis, one of my planners, on that topic, and from a pure size standpoint, there's probably one or two lots that are big enough to be subdivided that could each meet that 12,500 square foot minimum lot size threshold. There's actually a number of lots in Bel Air that don't even meet that 12,500 square foot minimum lot size requirement. Oddly enough, there's a lot of lots that are smaller than that. But the ones that do meet it, generally speaking, have some significant grade challenges, as you can probably picture, some of the ones that go down the ridge. So that's really not realistic. So, you know, we don't see an imminent threat. I mean, I can't guarantee that, right? Because someone could get creative or could look at demolition. That opens up more options potentially, but we have not identified anything else that's imminent.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
So in light of, in light of that, that's kind of what I thought. I, I, I hear nothing different. I'm, I'm going to ask for a consensus that we do nothing.
On George's consensus to actively look at a calendar to discuss these issues, that was.
Okay, we need to, we need to figure out a way to go forward. So we had, we had.
Sam, would you ask your consensus again, please?
I ask for a consensus that we do nothing in the, for the moratorium in this situation, in the Bel Air neighborhood.
Well, that's, that's four votes. I mean, do we need to bring, we need to bring this back to council, right?
No, on, on the moratorium. If, if you want to make changes to the code, but if you just let the moratorium lapse, it lapses, it doesn't have to come back to council for that.
Well, by consensus of four to three, there's a consensus to let it, to not bring it back to council.
And, and I guess my, I guess my thought is, is, I mean, I, I'm okay with also doing the flag lots, but that was a Zach and I vote. So I guess those folks that are not, you know, voting one way or the other, I mean, I think we know how Mr. Matthews feels about it. And I think if that's the case, then we have to do a whole ordinance of the city. But I guess, I mean, Ms. Dozeman, I guess I would ask, you know, what would help you decide one way or the other? I mean, a, a flag lot that would at least keep, you know, for the time being, you know, and I don't know if there's a way we can talk to Mr. Dahl and have that be, again, a, a short, kind of like an ordinance like we did with the emergency rooms or something while we make a decision on ADUs and those types of things.
On the flag lots specifically, to not allow them?
Or, or, yeah, not allow them citywide until we consider.
We need more information about flag lots and how often they happen.
I, I just don't know how, I mean.
Before we just straight up say, no more flag lots. We haven't even looked at it. But Zach and I have asked for it to come up in the future on, to study flag lots, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy with that, and I voted that way, but I, I guess I'm just trying to ask people then, what's going to make you decide one way or the other?
So I don't see the imminent threat specific to the Bel Air neighborhood, but I think the reason why this moratorium is specific to the Bel Air neighborhood is because there are other subdivisions going on throughout the rest of our city. So I think that this was a compromise to try to get the best of both worlds, and I foresee another one of these coming up as an issue somewhere else in the city. So, and I don't know if, I mean, you, you had kind of spoken at the last meeting about how there are administrative subdivisions currently in place, and I don't know in what areas those are happening and, and what kind of situations they are. But my concern is that this is going to become an issue in other places. So while I agree with maybe moving forward specifically on this moratorium to not allow administrative subdivisions for flag lots in the Bel Air neighborhood, okay, fine, great. That's probably not going to happen, but what if it happens somewhere else in the city? Are we going to try to put another emergency moratorium in to address that issue?
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. I, I don't know that I made this clear or not, but any kind of consensus I would make would be relative to the entire city. The moratorium for the Bel Air neighborhood was the only option that we had left on the table to be able to pass at the meeting. It wasn't as though, it was my desire that this be a fix for the entire city, but just because the moratorium was on the Bel Air neighborhood doesn't mean our solution to that existing problem can't be applied to the entire city. And I think that allowing the flag lots within administrative subdivisions, subject to a Planning Commission hearing, is a reasonable, sort of, resolution to the situation.
And I guess your opposition to, well, this is going to happen somewhere else in the city. I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying, however, this moratorium that we're talking about, do we let it lapse or not, will have nothing to do with that happening. So, I mean, that, that would happen either way. So again, like if Mr. Urban's passes, that it's like, okay, if it involves a flag, if it's administrative decision that involves a flag lot, then that's going to have to have another part of the process.
Well, that, that could probably be accomplished within 90 days to do something that straightforward.
Right. So, but I guess the point being is your fear that, hey, this could be going on in the city. Well, it could still be going on in the city right now, and it's going to still go on because it has nothing to do with the current moratorium that we have on this neighborhood that we're talking about, do we let it lapse or do we let it not? So, I mean, I hear your concern, and I know what you're saying, and I think there's not a one of us that doesn't feel like whatever we decide should be applied citywide. But I think this emergency moratorium is on one, you know, two-block area, and so what do we do in the 90 days for that two blocks?
Well, is, are we able to divorce ourselves from the, and we, we can divorce ourselves from the temporary moratorium in the Bel Air neighborhood on receiving building permits or whatever for subdivisions, from the issue of flag lots and how we review, what, what's the appropriate review procedure for flag lots? Is that, you know, Mr. Matthews has talked about that. Is that the core issue that we're, that we, we may be able to agree on tonight, which would lead us into a position of, if we did it citywide, we wouldn't, really wouldn't need to deal with the moratorium issue on Bel Air neighborhoods, because we would have dealt with a, a, a causational issue citywide?
I mean, I think Mr. Urban had a good point, that of the 40 that we've had in the last two years, administrative decisions, we've had one that has raised to this level. And it, a lot of it was a flag lot type of situation.
So I would like to make a consensus that we consider, or that we draft language to the effect that in the administrative subdivision process, that if a flag lot is being requested, that that be bumped up to the Planning Commission for review.
We haven't even studied flag lots. So now we're changing our code on something we haven't even studied. That's what we're doing with this consensus and then bringing it up to the DIAS. So just keep that in mind.
So we're not removing the ability to build a flag lot, but it seems as if it has been studied in 2014, and Patrick himself said that Ken Johnstone had recommended that they be outlawed.
We haven't seen that information.
So can we bring it to a study session before we bring it to the DIAS?
Zach and I, Zach and I have already, I've already got it on my list to bring it to a study session.
Well, I, I counted five. I think you counted five as well, just so, just.
On that last consensus?
Yeah, on that last consensus, just so that, I, I did count, count five, so that's, that's fine. But I, I, I do agree with the study session, but remember, this has to go through the Planning Commission and then back to us, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah, so we, we got to.
So we would study it.
We would study it, but so does the, the Planning Commission needs to study it as well. This, this issue on this moratorium, on this limited fix, is going to have to be studied in study session, then by the Planning Commission, then first reading, and then second reading.
Just to be clear, when you said you counted five, you're talking about on the consensus to do nothing?
No. No consensus.
So we have consensus, Mr. Urban, articulate your consensus again for me, please.
However, I'd like.
No, I'm, I'm listening.
Sorry. It's getting long. The consensus is to allow for the Planning Commission to review flag lots within the administrative subdivision process, whereas previously that was not part of the process. So the consensus is to allow for Planning Commission review of flag lots within the administrative subdivision process.
And would the, would the process end at, at Planning Commission, or would it then come to City Council? Or is that indeterminate?
I, I would think to make it simple, it would stop at the Planning Commission process, unless there's some legal reason otherwise, and, or unless other ways, it doesn't work that way. But I think that that would be simplified, because at least it's getting that review. But again, going back to the math question, the math is already settled in many cases, and so when we get into the flag lot issue, I think that's where we get into sort of the artistic nature of the situation, that as you get away from the clean-cut lines, it becomes more opinionated or there are some discrepancies relates to the decision. And so that's where the Planning Commission, I think, could help. And so that's where the planning commission, I think, could help vet that out.
Mr. Pye?
Just to be clear, the beginning of your, of your consensus is to draft an ordinance to that effect. Yes. No, I know. I just want to be clear that, that the consensus is to draft an ordinance to, to move through this process and get out of this emergency one, to do everything you said. Okay.
And just for, so council's aware, so that would trigger public notice, because anything that goes to the planning commission would get that 300-foot notice. And then we're not looking at any substantive changes to how flag lots are regulated, just triggering that, that hearing process.
So we have consensus on that? Thank you. That will conclude item number four. We'll move now to item number five, which is the appointment of the city treasurer. And I believe Ms. Davis brought this up at, at this meeting the other day. Would you like to speak on that?
So, um, I'll, I'll do some general comments of, of things I've heard from citizens, some homework I've done. And, and first of all, I want to make sure that, just like what I'm told in my real world and my day job, that I think that my discussion and my, my, my words are about the position and not about people. I think I, you know, I know, and I've had, and I've worked with several different city treasurers. I've, I've worked with Larry Schultz and Mr. DeTulio, who has done a great job in investing. I, I've known Mary Cavarra's work. So again, my thoughts and my discussions and I, and constituents' comments are, and questions are, again, are not posed against people, but about the position. One of which was brought up tonight, that it's, it's very unusual to have an elected city treasurer. I don't, I, again, I don't know if there are any city treasurers that are elected.
I believe there's one or two others in the state.
And I think they're very small cities, if, if it's my understanding in general. And, and so I, I guess, just, just a little knowledge or, or a little bit that I know, the, the city treasurer, and, and it's interesting, because I think that the general public, I know that a lot of times when we speak to the general public, a lot, you know, they'll get angry with me on the phone, and they'll say, I, I pay your salary, which, you know, I appreciate because they do pay a stipend for us. And, and, you know, a lot of us were surprised that we even got a stipend when we ran for our position. So, so the fact that we even get a, a small stipend for our work is greatly appreciated. At one point, I, I believe, so the city treasurer position gets 29, I believe, $29,000 a year, which equates to $2,416 a month. I believe at one point it was believed to be considered about a 20-hour-a-week position, which equates to about $30 an hour. So I've, I've had a, a lot of committee members ask me, so, you know, what is it, 20 hours a week, et cetera? You know, do they do, et cetera, et cetera? And, and so I, you know, I do think some of it's oversight, and a lot of the staff reports and stuff are created through our accounting systems. And the nice thing is they can, our city treasurer can review those staff reports and post them, which is nice, and they might have the oversight of the check runs every couple of weeks and those types of things. You know, just in homework with staff, as I've had these questions asked of me, and this has been throughout the years, because I've, one of my things is it's always something that I've talked about, looking at the charter and us having a charter committee, but that ship sailed at least for a couple of years, and by then I'll be not here. So I, I think that, for me, I'm, right now, the role is really almost more of a role, an employed role, because it's, you know, considered to be a 20-hour-a-week role and, and paid, you know, a sizable salary. I think that in some of the discussions, as we've kind of talked about filling the position and those types of things, people have said, well, you know, these people, you know, they, they look out for our folks, or, you know, for the people, and we should have that oversight. And, and, and so some of the discussion, you know, I've heard both ways. Yeah, you know, is it something that, you know, the city council can just ensure that the reports that are being, you know, created can get posted, because we really have enjoyed that type of thing, and, and we like that? So we'd like to continue to have that, so can we just be assured that those reports are presented on, on a frequent basis, or do we still want that oversight? So those are, those are some things that have come up. I think a lot of it, again, in, in talking to staff and, and many staff, I think there's some perspective that they've seen city treasurer hours be anywhere from maybe an hour a week to 10 hours a week. Again, that's probably maybe what they see in the office. They, you know, there could be some outside of that. But I think part of our goal as city council is also to be fiscally responsible to our, to, to our constituents. And a part of that could be, as times have changed, perhaps that role has changed, in that more has been done by staff, and the city treasurer position could be more of a oversight position that provides, ensures, you know, you know, double, does the double check of the check runs, maybe advises on some investments, and also makes sure some funds and that type of things are posted. So I, I wanted to bring this up because I, I think for a couple of different reasons, as this vacancy is there, you know, what is this role? Has it changed a bit? And as a city council, you know, probably something we should discuss, and even discuss with staff to see how they've even seen it change, and, and, and where it's been and where it's gone. I know even as far back as 16 years ago, at some point, the city treasurer was in charge of the staff. They, actually, the staff reported to this elected official, and I think at some point it was then given to, to Patrick and his team, because at some point it was like, yeah, staff shouldn't be reporting to an elected official. So it has changed significantly, but has that salary base and stuff changed? So that's kind of where I wanted to throw it on the table, especially if we're at the point that we're in a transition, so it is only nine months. So at that point, should we kind of look at this role and, and transition it now, rather than later?
Thank you. Additional discussion? Mr. Matthews?
Well, I'll try and be concise, because I think this is pretty cut and dried right now. We're not here to determine whether or not we should have a city treasurer or not as a charter item. We have a vacancy, and we're charged with seeing to it that that vacancy is filled as our constituents have voted on to create the position. So the only, the only idiosyncrasy I would see here is apparently elected officials, as far as councillors and mayors, I believe have to be replaced within 30 days. At least councillors do, and I think in this particular case, we can take that as a precedent and say that we have to elect or appoint a new treasurer within 30 days. And that, to me, seems pretty cut and dry. If we want to change the charter, well, we've got several, a couple of years to go till the next term ends, and we can try and change the charter at, at a general election.
The code does not give a timeframe on, on the appointment of the city treasurer. It does give the council the authority to appoint, just doesn't say how long, doesn't say what. You could, yep.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as it relates to the appointment, as we look at the charter, it uses the word "shall," and that we shall make an appointment. It doesn't say that we should if we can get around to it, and, you know, if we find the time, then we should appoint somebody. So, you know, there's two issues here. One is who to appoint in the process to appoint, and the, the appointment process, the next step, and I think it's a valid discussion as it relates to, you know, what is the role of the treasurer? What value and what costs and what benefits and what, what could be done at the staff level that is currently being done by the treasurer? And I think that giving the voters the option to make that decision is, one, to keep the charter healthy in the sense that if we're never asking the citizens about the charter, number one, they may not know that it exists, and number two, if we're not continually asking questions about the charter, we don't know if it's healthy or if it's maintaining the vibrancy that it's always had. So I think that asking the question about the treasurer to the residents to say, do we want to eliminate this position, would be the, the proper way to go about doing it. And then I don't, I, I think that the job that Jerry has done in this role is the best that we could hope for in this role. And so my concern is that when we don't get someone that qualified into that position, what happens then? So this is, we're looking at sort of from the best-case scenario. If you had somebody that did it amazingly like Jerry did, this is what it could look like. What we don't have is the example of what's the worst-case scenario and what could have happened, or what would have happened had we not had him in there. So with city staff running that role, it's, there's questions about impartiality and being able to parse between the needs of the citizens and the need of the, the city. And I think that there's a distinction there, in that the needs of the citizen may be to have a better rate of return on, on the investments that they're making, or that the citizens' money is maybe different from the city's money in that regard, is that the role of the treasurer is to act as that balance against city staff's desire to spend money in X, Y, or Z way. We might, we might end up spending in X, Y, and Z way, but the city treasurer's job is to act as that balance, just to make sure that we're going down the right path. So I'm not opposed to keeping the treasurer position. I think we should ask the citizens what they think. And I've heard some comments relative to, well, if we're going to ask the citizens about the charter in this instance, then we need to ask them about all these other questions we have about the charter. And, and my thought to that is, no, we don't. We have this one particular question. Let's go out, let's ask them, see what they say. There's also questions about timing, and I think that there's never a good time to discuss this type of situation. Nobody likes killing off an elected position. You know, everybody likes to keep those on, but I think that it's worth at least discussing and bringing before a, a citywide vote.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, it's worth discussing, and if we do decide to bring it to a citywide vote, fine, but that's not something that we can do at this point, I think is what Christie was kind of alluding to, because you, you can't have a position, somebody running for a position, and then also have a measure that people are voting, should we have that position or not? So, so yeah, so, yeah, that's, the timing-wise isn't very good, but I think what I hear from you is that your understanding is that the amount of time spent in the office is less than what was originally thought, and when the salary was set. And so you're talking about if we're going to change the expectations in salary, this is a good time to do it before we appoint somebody else into it?
I mean, I think that's a discussion. I don't want to make that assumption of, of Jerry, because a lot of it's not necessarily, you know, you spending time in the office. But I, I think that's the other thing. I think all of us, you know, I mean, I think the time, we're not here, and I think also as an elected official, as, as our city treasurer or our city clerk, you're not here because it's your part-time job. You're here because it's, you want to do it as a civic responsibility. So I guess my ultimate question is, you know, the mayor is paid $800 a month, and our city treasurer's paid $2,400 a month, city council's paid 600. What, you know, why is there that difference? I mean, why is it that the city treasurer, I might agree, let's, let's have those checks and balances, let's have that, um, let's, you know, fine, let's keep it, but why, why are we paying a position 20 hours a week when we, you know, I, I guess, and if we do hold, if we do pay a position 20 hours a week, I feel responsible to our constituents that we hold that person somehow accountable to that 20 hours a week, because, I mean, that's $30 an hour, 20 hours a week. I mean, I mean, that's a part-time job, and anybody else who takes a part-time job would be held, you know, there would be some type of accountability. So I guess my question is, and I, you know, I wasn't here 15 years ago, or however many years ago, when this was made, but it is quite a difference. And, and really, there, you know, I mean, at least, you know, you see us here every Monday till 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock at night, you know, and, and so, and then again, again, I'm saying this is about the position, not about the people. So I don't want anyone to sit and go, oh, Christie said you don't do anything. No, it's not what I'm saying. But I, I guess in, in many, any many points, some of the roles that are assigned, my understanding is a lot of that's done by staff, and, and then some of, of the others is either presented by our city treasurer, reviewed by city treasurer. So is it really 20 hours, 80, you know, an 80-hour-a-month position?
You've already had a shot. Other people that haven't spoken, I'd like to go to Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've, I've found it very interesting, the conversations that this vacancy has stirred up. And I definitely agree that as a body, we should put something on the calendar to study the value, the duties of the position, whether it should be or shouldn't be an elected position, and whether we want to put that on as an about, a ballot initiative in the future. As far as the issue at hand, I do believe that it is an elected position, and we have an obligation to fill it. I think somebody mentioned "we shall." I don't recall who that was. And so as of right now, I think we have been very fortunate in the qualifications of those that have been elected to the position, but that's not always going to be the case. Jerry has done a wonderful job at investing our funds and being very transparent in his reporting, and I would like to see that continue. And I would like to see the person that we appoint into that position have a general knowledge and a base, so that they can come in. I mean, because it's not even midstream, like, we're, we're 10 months away from an election for this position itself. So we're, we're really need, going to need somebody that is able to come in and take the reins and go with the flow and continue moving forward, as opposed to somebody that doesn't have any knowledge or qualifications to fill this position. And so I think if, I mean, several of us have discussed the potential studying and more dialogue about this position and possibly the clerk position as well. So I'd like to put that on a future agenda, if I have that support. And then I think if somebody wants to make a consensus, if there are no other conversations, does anybody else have anything to say?
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to Christie's point regarding the hours and the amount of time that they're, they're working on this, this role, in my mind, if, if the city treasurer takes one hour and makes a $29,000 decision and is able to bring us in 100 grand in some form or fashion as it relates to the decision he just made, he can take the rest of the year off, because he's already gotten, we've already gotten our value out of them. And so to me, it isn't so much the amount of hours or what they're doing, it's the net result of those activities. And again, I don't know how to put that into some sort of outcome or metric for that, but.
And you can't do that based off of an elected position. I mean, you could elect the, you know, I'm going to just say. You could elect a milkman, and who has no banking experience, no municipal bond experience. You, you know, I mean, and, and he just wants an extra $29,000, and he's got a good personality, and knocks door to door, and gets elected. You know, so I guess in some respects, we could also get a city treasurer who wants to do his civic responsibility and put in an hour and make us $29,000, because it's his civic responsibility.
Well, and I, I think that's part of the problem.
I mean, isn't that the point? It's your civic responsibility. It's not a part-time job.
Right. And I, I, it, it's impossible for us to be able to ascertain that because it is an elected position as it relates to who's going to get it and who's not. So I...
Right, but wouldn't you get probably more of the person who is of that mindset, this is my bailiwick and I thrive in this area type of mindset if perhaps, uh, salary wasn't an issue?
Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I don't believe the charter requires that we appoint anybody for this job. And, uh, staff can make no decision about whether, how money is paid and, uh, to whom. So, uh, staff does not set policy and cannot decide. I mean, they can decide to pay a bill for a new roof, but they can't decide, uh, whether or not we need a new roof. Um, so I've known some treasurers in the past and I know that they came into the office, uh, very, very little, uh, let me say an hour every two weeks. And they essentially have one decision to make, and that's where to put the money. And, um, you know, as a city, as a government, uh, we have approved places where we can put our money. So it's not as if, um, they're wildly speculating in the stock market or the, or the bank savings market. They have a very short list of approved, uh, places to put money. So although Jerry did a great job, uh, and it, the reports that he started doing was, uh, were very useful. And I do hope that we could continue that. But I see no reason to, uh, fill that with an elected person. And if we want to try getting along without, um, an elected treasurer, this is our one time to do it because we have a fairly short period of time, um, between now and when that new treasurer, an elected treasurer, if we so decided, uh, or if the citizens so decided, um, we have a very short time for that to happen. So I think this would be a great trial period, and the citizens will tell us what they want by voting on the charter when the time comes. So I think we ought to just not fill this.
Uh, Mr. Pond and then Mr. Matthews.
I'm still digesting that. I, I, I don't, I don't entirely disagree with that, and I don't, I don't disagree with the, with go, with, with, uh, filling the, the position in the interim either. Uh, and so I'm a little bit stuck on that. I will say though, I think it's a really good point about, not so much the, the compensation, although that, I think that's a piece of it and it's important, it very much is. But I think if you look at that compensation for what its intended purpose is, which really is, that this is supposed to be a part-time job as we've defined it, I think that that's really contrary to, to actually getting the right people in the seats. I mean, if you really have, if we have people in our community who are investment bankers or something like that that want to do their civic duties, they can't have a part-time job. And so it's giving a mixed, it's giving a mixed message. It's like, you know, we're going to pay someone to, to be here 20 hours a week, but the people who you would actually hope to run for it, they can't fulfill that. How, and, and because that's not, that's not practical. It's not practical if someone's going to take another half a job on top of their full job. And so I think, I think right sizing their, the, what the expectations are and therefore right sizing the, the compensation makes a lot of sense. Um, and, and so I think it's, it's entire, you know, it's, I think two lines of thought. One is to, that maybe we don't need this, this, this position at all, and this is our time to do it. The other line of thought is, um, that this is a time for us to, um, more narrowly define what we think the, what the responsibilities are, such as oversight and not, you know, not that it's a part-time job, but that it's, it's an important oversight function, and that would be another way to approach it. And again, that's where the, the, the discussion of what the actual kind of compensation as, as it reflects what we're asking of the position would come into play and, and perhaps we can discuss that, so.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Um, au contraire, as far as for blowing this off for the, another year, under section 311 of the Charter, vacancies in elective offices. If a vacancy occurs in the office of the city clerk or city treasurer, no special election shall be called, but such vacancy shall be filled by appointment by the council for the remainder of the term. We just spent two hours on the subdivision deal talking about we're rule, we're a land of, we're a city of rules and we have rules and we have to follow them, and we can't come back and change something. That's pretty darn specific. And the only thing I would do is with my consensus is saying we'd do it the same as we do with the councillor vacancy, so it's in an orderly fashion. We don't have two different discussions going on six, three months apart or something and do it within 30 days. In regards to whether or not city treasurer's got just compensation, we control that. It's up to the council to set the salary. You just can't do it for the guy while he's in office. So if we wanted to cut salary, this would be the time to maybe have a study session on that before somebody else goes into office. But in the meantime, we have to, we're told to put somebody in office. That's our job.
Ms. Hoppe?
I, I agree that, that we should appoint someone for this position for the next 10 months. Another thing that it does also, and, uh, Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but presides over the tax, the tax...
The audit?
Audit. No, the, the, um...
Sales tax appeal audits.
Yeah, the sales tax appeal, you know, cases. And so I think it's good to have a third-party person instead of necessarily the staff doing that, um, which is good. But I do think that we should adjust the compensation. We should do, do it while it's an empty position. And then that way, anyone who is applying for that position will know straight up what's, what they're applying for.
I want to weigh in before I go to you because I think Mr. Matthews is right. We are a government of laws. It's, it's obligatory on, on us to appoint someone. I don't think there's an option to it. And I think back only, um, you know, a, a year or so ago when, uh, when, when the Senate of the United States failed to bring a nominee for a vote, and, and that was, uh, I think criminal. Uh, I also review all of the disbursements that are made in the city after the treasurer makes them. So there is another check. Um, and I also agree with Mr. Matthews that the city council sets the, sets the compensation for the treasurer as it does for the, it does for the clerk and it does for the other councillors. And if, if we, i- if we are going to, uh, re- review and revise the, uh, potential role of the treasurer, uh, and then we certainly have the right to, um, to make the compensation commensurate with the work, that's to be done. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. So I've already, uh, put in a question to staff about whether it is possible to change the salary of an elected position, um, midterm. Um, so, uh, Jerry DiTulio has already mentioned that, um, per the, per, I think, state statute that we cannot, uh, do that. So I reached out to staff and asked them, um, whether it is we can or not.
Mr. Dahl is, is reviewing what can happen right now.
Uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's almost as though people thought that might be going through this someday because they also mentioned that as well. It's like they're telling the future here. But it says, "Elected officials shall receive such compensation as the council shall prescribe by ordinance, provided they shall neither increase nor decrease the compensation of any elected official during his term of office." So you could take that to mean, well, it could be in Jerry's existing term that expires in 2019, or it could be the individual that is in that position. So that would be up for the city attorney to come up.
Um, I'll miss Hoppe first, but then I'll go to you, Ms. Davis.
I was just going to say, again, either way, we could still have the, the discussion and then have that be, uh, be out there that when this ends in November 2019, it will change, if that's what we have to do.
Ms. Davis?
I'd like to make a consensus because my consensus was kind of going to where Larry just commented. I was just kind of saying, I've heard both. Uh, but my consensus is, yes, I do feel we should appoint a treasurer for now until we decide if it's something that needs to be a charter question, which again, that ship sailed at least for now. Um, I, I, what I would like to do is make a consensus that we first review, um, if council can indeed look at the responsibilities and the, um, pay of that. Um, before we appoint our new, um, city treasurer, then I'd like to do so if, uh, Mr. Dahl does not feel that we can do that before. I would like to, um, at least then, and I, I don't know how to word this, but at least, um, maybe even decide that now with the assumption so that, you know, like for instance, if someone's running for treasurer now thinking, I'm going to also run in, you know, in November, that they know that that would change, you know? So I don't know that, like, so say for instance, okay, I'd like to make a consensus. We continue with it, the treasurer. I would like to review the position and the salary and get word from, uh, Jerry Dahl on if that change in salary can be made immediately or if it would be made at the next election. But I would like to make that decision at this time.
Is there consensus? We have consensus. Thank you. That will conclude that item unless someone has any questions. Ms. Dozeman?
So would that also mean that staff is going to put together an application?
That's my question. So is that the understanding that we will...
We will advertise, so the, the assumption is that we will put together an application and advertise in conjunction with the other advertisement that we have going now.
On, on the same timeframe too, as...
Can I, can I ask, do you think, and, and I'm going to ask this of counsel because I don't want someone to feel like they were hoodwinked. Um, I guess my question is if, like, say for instance, someone's applying and thinking they're going to make $29,000, but we decide that, but Mr. Dahl decides that we can change that to be a $1,000-a-month position, are we, I mean, deceiving somebody? Would be my question. That would be my only question.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we, we could, we could wait till Dahl makes, Dahl already has the question in hand, and hopefully he could make a determination the next day or two so that we know what information to put out with the application.
That, that the salary is to be determined?
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, these people should not be applying because of the salary.
Ms., uh, Ms. Hoppe?
Uh, we do currently have on the January 7th study session, the District One City Council candidate presentations, which means that they have the month of December to fill out their applications, which are, have been, are now done and have come out to us. Um, and then they will have an opportunity to speak in front of us. Do we feel like January 7th is enough time to be able to get the application completed the way we want it? And then, um, and then rush the, into like doing the treasurer at the same time as city councilor? Should we look at, um, we have a very open schedule on February 4th. So maybe, you know, we do, we do District One in January and we do treasurer in February.
Uh, Mr. Matthews had his hand up first and then Mr. Urban?
Well, it's, I think the operative word there is tentative schedule, and I think we should make every effort to meet it for both positions so that people are paying attention and know what we're doing and it doesn't get split out. If the dam breaks and we can't make it, then we just have to adjust.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to the issue of timing, since the, uh, council position is to become vacant on December 31st, it makes sense that that must be carried, cared for in January. But the treasurer position is not vacant until the 6th of January, so the 4th of February would be...
January 7th, yep.
I'm sorry, yeah, January 7th. Uh, but that, so I think that that works as it relates to the compensation. I would hate to hire somebody and say, uh, we'll let you know we're going to pay after we hire you. That, it, that would limit our pool, I think. So just because of the length of the term and what we're asking someone to take on, I would be okay with leaving the salary as is while discussing what it looks like because we're, we'd be, we'd be rewriting the budget, the...
That's not what mine, since that's not what mine consensus was.
To not look at... No, not, you have your consensus.
But, but then we'd be presenting it, the salary as it is.
Well, I mean, that, that would be my concern is that, that we, I don't think it's appropriate...
And I didn't wait till we decide the payment. Again, I don't want to leave somebody thinking they're going to make $29,000.
And then we decide they're going to make 800 a month?
Well, and, and I guess my, my reasoning or my, uh, argument is that we shouldn't be messing with the salary at this time because of the short length of the task that we're asking people to jump onto and the fact that it's already in the budget for this year, that in the next year's budget, we can reevaluate that.
The census, the consensus was already to review it and to, to possibly change it before the next person starts.
We can also bring back at our next study session, uh, on the 10th, on the 17th, the, the feedback from our lawyer, the, the response back from our lawyer with respect to the flexibility that we, we may or may not have in, um, in altering the salary requirements.
And I would like to mention that if, if we bring on the 17th and we're talking about that information, then I feel like we should be aware that February 4th would be our best date to look towards city treasurer. And so I'd like to ask for a consensus that we look for city treasurer in February, appointment in February.
So...
Yeah, yeah, like the appointment won't happen in January is what I'm saying.
So get, get to maybe, um, follow up on what the mayor said, um, get more determination from the attorney on December 17th so we know what to put on the application when it gets sent out, that this is what the salary is, and then shoot for February 4th for the presentations from candidates. That's what I heard.
We only have one study session in February.
Okay. Does that conclude that item? Thank you. We'll go into item number six, staff reports. Mr. Goff, Ms. Adoff, Goff?
Uh, real quickly, um, you may have seen some, um, heard some things on the news about, uh, the G-line, um, and the FRA potentially, um, closing down the A-line and, which impacts the G-line. And, um, RTD and, um, DTP, Denver Transit Partners, who's building the line, they have a meeting tomorrow, um, to discuss these recent, um, directives by the Federal Railroad Administration. So hopefully after tomorrow, we'll have more information. The FRA gave, um, RTD basically 30 days to come up with a plan on how to fix some of these deficiencies that the FRA is, is finding still. Um, both DTP and, and RTD believe that FRA is, is, is kind of going outside of the five-year waiver that was already approved and are now starting to require additional things that they didn't originally require. So, um, may not be as dire as, as the news is making it sound, but we'll know more after tomorrow, hopefully. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Elected officials' reports. Start on my left with Ms. Dozeman.
None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, Ms. Davis, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Just a quick question for Mr. Goff. I, we got, all got these liability, whatever deals. What's, I, I don't recall seeing these before. What's going on?
I can answer that if you want. So that's, uh, we received an email with our, we had a, like a orientation, a council orientation booklet, and I was having trouble printing a memo, so I asked to put it in my box. And she said, you know what, I'll just put in all the councillors' boxes. So in your email, there's an orientation packet, council, council orientation packets for all to review, and then sign that and send it back to her. So check your email.
It's, it's maybe to answer what, what, what this is for, what is, um, our insurance company, SIRS, uh, requires that, as one of our standards, that, um, elected officials are provided... that elected officials are provided with preventing public officials' liability information, and that you've at least looked at it and you sign off that you've received it.
When are we going to see it?
She sent it to you.
You have it in an email.
She sent it to you last week.
Two day, a couple days ago?
I'll have to check again.
Okay. Well, we'll make sure you got it, and we'll send it again just in case. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Urban? Ms. Hoppe? Well, I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up for the lighting of the Christmas tree on Saturday night. It was a great night. Had, had a lot of, a lot of great citizens showing up and a lot of fun things happening. I'd like to, to thank the city for their sponsorship, the McDonald Group, at Keller Williams, Local Works, and Lutheran Medical Center for being key sponsors. And wish everybody a happy Advent season. And with, there's no further business, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.